Yeah.
Just leaving a legacy with your players.
Yeah, I'm doing it.
It's not just physical development, it's mental. It should be everything, body, mind, spirit.
Yep.
Physical is the last one.
Yeah, right.
And remember speaking into the microphone.
Yeah. Problems, you need to hear that.
We're hot. Ready? All right. I'm calling the meeting of the Planning Commission to order for February 11th. We'll start by doing a roll call. Jason Wiedemann, District 1 is here. District 2, David Bentrued, here. District 3, Jason Crone, here. District 5, Jacob Hoke, here. At Large, Rich Blankish, here. At Large, Tara Ostendorf. And District 4 temporarily has a vacancy. And then ex officio is Joe Persky.
Here.
Let's begin by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, municipal, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. Our first order of business is reciting the oath of order. Oath of...
I have an up here, since when you have an oath, I'm sorry.
I have both of office and then elections.
Okay, we'll do one in office. Let's be your way.
Oath of office. Is it all of us, or?
Everybody.
Okay.
Do we stand up, or do you do a deal?
I, Jason Crone, solemn swear that I support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States of Minnesota, and I will faithfully execute this charge to the planning commission, the county of experience in Minnesota, according to law, best my ability, understanding of the Constitution.
So we sign these and then turn them in afterwards.
Yeah, please. Yeah, disclosure, okay.
So we're electing a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary. So I will open the floor to nominations for chair.
Mr. Vice Chair, I'll make a nomination for you to be chair.
We have a chair for me, for Jason Wiedemann as chair. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Do we have a second?
One second.
Thank you for your trust in me. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so I shall retain the gavel. We are seeking nominations for a vice chair.
All nominate Jacob Hoke.
Nomination, second for Jacob. Any other nominations? Other nominations? All in favor of Jacob serving as vice chair?
Aye.
Aye.
Jacob, welcome on board. Finally, secretary. Any nominations for secretary?
I've done a bunch of these, I'll just keep going on the list. I'll nominate Mr. David Bentrued.
Mr. Bentrued.
Secretary do it.
They break all minutes. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Are you willing to serve?
Sure.
So I seek a second.
I'll second.
So we have a second from Tara. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome on board, sir.
All right.
All right, so our executive team is in place.
Mr. Chair, Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director. We do have a District 2 Planning Commission representative to the Board of Adjustment, and this year that would be Dave Bentrued, and I did chat with him a little bit about that, and he will be serving for the Board of Adjustment as the Planning Commission representative. We do need a Plating Committee representative and a Parks Commission representative.
I'll volunteer for the parks. Sounds good. You've been on plating, right, Chase?
I went to one plating meeting, which I'm happy to serve again if...
Yeah.
...the decision of the board.
Do we need to nominate him, or can he volunteer?
He can volunteer as far as...
Okay.
So I've been voluntold.
Yep, thank you.
Volunteer is a tribute.
Shelley, just to clarify, I am off of that one now. Plating, if I'm...
So you don't do plating. So we never know the plating, but you're doing Board of Adjustment.
Yep, but, yep. I'm... We should do parks. Got it.
And the BOE is roughly every month.
Adjustments does. Yes. Plating is not very often.
Okay, yep. All right, so I think we're all set. All right, so our first order of business is to consider a zoning request from Brandon Rudnicki of Holdingford. Brandon is not available to join us today. He would like to participate in the meeting, having his request for continuance till next month, to the next meeting. So I would entertain a motion to continue, item number one.
I'll motion that. I'll second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are flying. Let's keep up the speed. All right, agenda item number two. To consider a request for a conditionally used permit submitted by Elizabeth Fiddler of St. Joseph, Minnesota, according to Sections 4.8, 6.51, and 9.3.5 of Sterns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance Number 439, to operate a rural tourism business in the Agricultural Forty zoning district. The property under consideration is located in the part of southeast corridor, southeast corridor, southeast corridor, in Section 11, and the northeast corridor, northeast corridor, northeast corridor, in Section 14, lying east of County Road 2 and north of 360th Street, St. Wendell Township. The property address is 8664 360th Street, St. Joseph, Minnesota. And Liz, is you an intendant? Are you Liz?
Yes, yes, I am.
Awesome.
Hi.
Hi. So we'll throw our staff report, and then we'll allow you to have any comments, and we'll have staff comments or board questions. Okay, staff.
Okay. So this conditionally used permit is for a rural tourism business. The applicant operates Sunny Mary Meadow, which is a cut flower farm on the property. They're requesting to construct a multi-use structure that will include floral workspace and production area, storefront, and event space. Events would include things like workshops, weddings, showers, corporate events, and then other structures on the property are used for storage for the business and things like that. Property is owned agriculture forty. Property is within the Shoreline Overlay District of a tributary to the Watab River. However, what they're requesting to do is outside of the Shoreline Overlay District. Access is from 360th Street, which is a township road. St. Wendell Township has reviewed the request and approved another approach for the business and to use their main access off of the township road. There are wetlands on the property. Our wetland staff have reviewed the location of the structure in the parking area just through aerial photo review due to the conditions now, and it appears they'll be okay and be able to avoid the wetland, but before we issue any construction permits, they'll want to review that in the spring. So it's existing farm site here. The property consists of farmland and wetland areas. Lot coverage is met. There will be less than one acre of new impervious surface created with this request, so no stormwater management plan was required. As far as performance standards go, they're all being met. She provides a parking plan, a parking layout for forty-eight parking spaces. New septic system will be installed for this structure. There will be one sign on the building that can be a maximum of thirty-two square feet. Outdoor lighting will be downward facing and shielded. St. Wendell Township approved the use of the road. Setbacks will be met. She's proposing a catering kitchen, so she'll just have to work with our food, beverage, and lodging staff to determine if a license from them is required or not before that's operational, and no lodging is proposed at this time as part of this request. Within the area, there is approximately seventeen homes and three registered feedlots over ten animal units and two registered feedlots less than ten animal units, surrounded by agriculture forty zoning with a mix of farmland, wetland, woods, and rural residential lots. The comprehensive plan has this area as agricultural and rural. Proposed conditions, if the Planning Commission recommends approval, we've got ten proposed conditions. Number one, value-added products and/or services related to the flower farm are allowed and subject to the requirements of Ordinance 439. Two, discuss if days and hours of operation should be added. Three, discuss if there should be limitations on special events or outdoor music. Four, any new signs shall meet the requirements of Section 7.25 of the zoning ordinance. Five, a sewage treatment system permit shall be obtained along with a construction site permit for the structure. Lighting on the property shall be directed to stay on the property. Parking areas shall be installed and made available per approved plans. The state accessibility code is required to be met, and eating and drinking establishment license may be required for the catering kitchen. Plans shall be reviewed by the department to determine licensing needs, and a wetland determination shall be required prior to issuance of a construction site permit.
Thank you. Any comments? Additions to the staff report context?
I don't think so.
Okay. Comments from the Planning Commission? Questions?
Go ahead, Dave. Go ahead, Chase. All right. Mr. Chair, question for the applicant. One of the things that we are being asked to consider as part of the CUP are like hours of operation, number of events, and things like that over the course of the year. Have you put any thought to if you were to put hours of operation or anything like that that would fit within your business plan?
Yeah. So hours of operation, ideally, flowers are picked very early in the morning, and I know there are a lot of flower farms in the country that will do sunrise yoga, but however, you know, 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. would be ideal. You know, maybe a few times that it could go till 11:00, a few times a year or something like that, but...
Yeah, and that's exactly why I was asking the question, because we'd hate to put any limitations on the business that would also impact what you're able to do from a performance standpoint. I don't think any of that stuff's unreasonable, we just want to make sure that we put something in a place that works for...
Yeah, as I said in the application, the types of events are things that people buy flowers for.
Okay, all right.
And decorate with flowers, so it just makes sense.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, and Jason, I very much appreciate that. However, I think we also have to be careful, because if, when you're vague, you say, "We're going to do this a few times a year, so we're going to allow you to be open until 10:00 o'clock," unless we spell that out, does that mean every day? And so therefore...
Therefore, in the future, you know, you might see then folks thinking that, you know, that applies to every day. Same thing with business hours as well. And I'll tell you what, the idea of having a couple of events even before 7:00, if you want to do a couple of sunrise events, I would have no problem with that, okay? But if you want to have a rock concert at 6:00 in the morning, then there might be issues with the neighbors if you do that, okay?
Agreed, and that's...
And so we have to be careful how we spell things out, because it's given people latitude in which to work outside the parameters that aren't in the best interest of the neighbors, okay?
Okay.
I think I figured out my own question, just by reading the map. I wasn't sure the parking, if I understand the parking correctly, it's, I was thinking it was to the east of where you want to build, but it looks like it's closer to the south along the road, so it just looked like the land was kind of low. In part of that, I didn't know if there's water there in the spring, if that's going to encroach on the parking area or not, but it doesn't look like it.
My builder and my excavator guy said they think it's a good idea to put it there, so I don't know really, honestly.
Yeah.
I'm leaving that to the professionals.
Yeah. Well, it kind of, I guess, well, that is my question, and I don't know if this is for the owner, for the staff, but...
I've never not been able to mow the lawn there, even after a big rain.
Even in the spring?
Correct.
Is there ever standing water there in the spring?
Correct.
And so that area wouldn't flood or fermenting snow?
Correct, there's, yeah. And we mow the lawn up to where that tall grass is, that's why we stopped mowing there, and so it's, and it's not going to pass that.
Okay, and if...
And we, and we could mow further, we just like to save on time and not mow that much.
And if Phil, bringing in Phil, would be required to make it parkable, if that's a word, I didn't know what the rules were on that, but...
Sorry, I missed that question.
Well, I don't know how susceptible that parking area might be to standing water, or if bringing in Phil to make it, you know, are there any restrictions on that with what looks like some potential wetland being so close to it?
You may need to have a good base.
Right. We don't necessarily have ordinance requirements as to what, other than that it has to be durable and dustless for the parking area, so we don't have anything regarding like construction of it, and our wetland staff will review to make sure there's not going to be any wetland impacts with the parking area.
I guess that was my only concern, just kind of encroaching on that wetland and what the rules were on that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can we get a roll call who was out there, and then also have the applicant do name an address, please?
Roll call for who's out there. District 1, Jason, I was. Two?
District 2, Dave Bentrued, I went.
District 3, Jason, I was.
Five?
Jacob Hoke, I was.
Six.
At Large, Rich Blankish, I was there.
At Large, Tara.
Tara Ostendorf, I was there.
Okay. And then name an address.
For the record.
For the record.
Elizabeth Mergan, 8664 360th Street, St. Joseph Street, or St. Joseph, Minnesota. I was married, that's why it says Mergan, or Fiddler on there at the time of the application. Yeah.
Okay. Now that's true now.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I want to echo Dave's comments. I do think, as, if we take a look at the screen, as you see it up there, I think that issue of the encroachment on that wetland is an issue. So again, the idea of having staff, you know, take a little look at that in the spring and make, and verifying that that's acceptable, you know, something that should be put in.
Other comments or questions from the Planning Commission? Hearing none, it opened the public hearing. If there's any members from the public who'd like to speak on this item, please approach As you come up, please state your name and address and speak into the mic.
My name is Rod Maholic. My address, I'm right down the road from this and right across from her, and if you put that map back up there, the bottom corner, if you go back to the bigger area of that, there's cattails in that bottom right corner of that, plotted out white spot of that parking lot. So I don't see how that is not wetland. I cut the meadow for years, and it has up to two feet of water in it. Anytime it rains, three or four inches, so I would think you need to really look at that, and as a concerned neighbor, we are concerned about extra traffic on our township road that already has a lot of traffic, so... And we're also concerned about what are the feedlot setbacks? Like, how far from a feedlot can you build a business, especially in a AR40 area that isn't zoned for business to begin with? It's supposed to be ag land, so that is my concern, and talking to more neighbors, there's more that are concerned, but they're not here, so...
We'll have the staff and applicant answer when we're on the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Yep.
Please state your name and address.
David and Susan Counter. We live at 8354 360th Street. We're right next to the Fiddler property. As far as the runoff, if you pave that area, our meadow will be flooded. It is constantly wet. We have to wait for it to really dry to be able to cut our meadow, so we're worried about the runoff due to having that paved area. As Rod Maholic stated, it is cattails now on that one corner. We're also concerned with the paperwork stating that maximum number of eighty people per event. It states that it can hold up to 160. So where are these people going to go? Where are they going to all park? It states overflow can go up towards her preview, or her current buildings. That traffic has to flow on our road. I'm handicapped, and I bike on that road, so I'm concerned for my safety. I'm concerned for all of the other neighbors that bike, walk, jog on that road. We just had a vehicle sideswipe another vehicle just this week on that, on that road. We had our mailbox demolished last year because somebody sideswiped it. That road cannot handle that traffic. The ditches are too steep. If somebody goes off because they're trying to get around the large farm implements that are on that road, they will roll. They are that steep. Also, the hours, as you stated, 10:00, we're in bed. I am on a lot of medication, so I have a hard time sleeping. If things go till 11:00, if there's music, that hinders my healing. Also, what happens to our property taxes, our property values? We live in the country. You want a business, have your business in town. I'm sorry, Liz. This isn't the city. We live where we are. We have cattle because we like it quiet. I don't need loud neighbors, loud parties. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Other comments from the public? And then did I see we had a written comment?
Yep, I do have a summary of the letters that were sent to you earlier.
Yep, I do have a summary of the letters that were sent to you earlier today, and you've got hard copies there. So I'll just highlight a few things from each of those letters that we received. So the first one, from Amy Dagerstrom with the Sterns History Museum. She supports the request, commenting that her ability to continue the family farm legacy shows her connection to the history of the farm site. Proposal will benefit her, her family, and the community, and they'll be partnering with her on future events. Tamara Berger with the Recore FFA advisor and teacher supports the request. Liz has allowed FFA groups to tour her farm. Facility would be an opportunity for the community to connect with agriculture. Small event center would attract people to the area. Letter from Randy and Nancy Schmitz, they support the request but have some concerns and recommendations related to event hours and noise restrictions, enforcement violation process, prohibition of camping, private use of property in existing buildings, parking, CUP transferability, and restroom compliance. A letter from David and Susan Counter, concerned with the traffic, 360th being narrow. Risk to pedestrians, would like to see turning lanes, and then concerned about the drainage from the property. Letter from Kaylee Becker, who supports the request, has attended farm events at, or events at the farm. And it provides a fun activity for everyone to enjoy. Nathan Golade from, is a Royalton FFA advisor and teacher, also supports the request. Liz has hosted many field trips, providing hands-on learning experiences, demonstrates commitment to community engagement and economic growth.
Thank you. So let's, there is a question about feedlot setbacks, and how that would influence the use here?
There are no feedlot setback requirements for rural tourism businesses.
Okay. And then there are some other questions. Do you have any additional input for the feedback we heard?
Yeah, I just want to say that floriculture is a cut flower sector of specialty crops. And there was actually just a $2.6 billion initiative through the Farm Bill called the MASK Program, Marketing Assistance for Specialty Crop Growers. And the suggestion was to get crops, as I am a farmer, into the hands of consumers as quickly as possible. And that is what I'm trying to do, because they are perishable, and so to continue being a thriving farmer, that is, that's what I'm trying to do.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
Second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And, ah, sorry, opposed? Alright, motion, hearing is closed. Comments from the board?
Mr. Chair, additional question for the applicant. So in the cut flower business, the way your plan is set up, is it going to be basically all flowers that you grow, or like in the off-season this time of year, will you be, like, bringing flowers in from other areas to supply?
Yeah, so I, I grow, or I buy, I also have a website that I own called FarmersToFlorists.com. And I buy flowers from other growers in the state, and I kind of act as a, a resource or connection. So my goal would be to support other farmers that grow other crops, such as nursery farmers, other specialty crop growers in the off-season, and buy from them, and then porch pot classes, centerpieces, that type of thing.
Okay. Then when it comes to the events, well, how do you envision the events playing out over the course of the year? I'm guessing there'd be probably some outdoor events in the summer, call it weddings, so on, so forth. And then, would there be things like in the winter, too? Because I think it comes, it becomes important in trying to set the number of events back to some of the concerns of local residents. If you stockpile too many of them in the summer, and then every weekend there's a wedding going on, that becomes disruptive. If it's a couple, then it's not a big deal, but if they're staggered throughout the year, there's some things we can put into, to the hours of operations to try to deal with all of that. How do you envision the events working?
Yeah, and so first of all, I want to say that I am very open to hearing the feedback of the neighbors, and I think I am very confident that we are going to be able to be very respectful of their concerns. I, right now, my envisioned plan is truly not to be a wedding venue. I can honestly say that, and I, I really do mean that that's not in my business plan, because I do wedding flowers for about five venues in the area constantly, and I don't want to be competing with them. So my idea, and I started meeting with Heidi back in June, I went to her first, and I said, "Here's my idea. What can I do within my rights as a property owner? What am I allowed to do?" And then I went to my architect, then I went to my lender, then I went to my builder. So I have very much tried to go through the process of what I'm supposed to do here by law. But the events that I want to host are basically everything but weddings, when I say those times that people gather, not a wedding, not a funeral, but what happens in between. So anniversary parties, and birthday parties, and wedding showers. And I'm meeting with 50 brides a year anyway to do their wedding flowers, and I say, "Where's your wedding shower?" So a lot of those events are during the morning, a lot of those events are open house style, so there's not necessarily a particular start time or an influx time. Currently, my business goes, I will go to different corporate break rooms and haul a lot of stuff in there to teach them how to build a bouquet, and they can come out to my farm instead. So just get into the hands of the consumer quicker.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Chair? Elizabeth, you know, and this really sounds good, and it really sounds wholesome. And, you know, it sounds like it's gonna be an attractive addition to the, to the township, to the folks. However, we've seen this in the past, where you come in and you're telling us that you're going to be doing one thing, and we haven't even approached the topic of music. And, and what's gonna be, you can be telling us that that's what you want to do, but what happens when you decide, well, you know, I can draw more people there when I play music, and I can draw even more people there when I serve alcohol. And then all of a sudden, you're doing this every weekend, because instead of gaining from the flowers, you're making actually more money, and it's more lucrative to have the beverages and charge people for admission to come in. That's a concern of, I think, this group here, as well as the board, and as well as a good number of residents throughout the entire county, because we've seen this happen in the past. Now, again, I support what I hear you saying, but, but what I don't support is what I've seen things turn into, okay? So somehow, we gotta make sure what you're telling us is actually going to happen, and that you're not going to bend the rules once these parameters are put within your CUP, okay?
And I guess, question to lead on for staff, I mean, if we do have violations of the CUP, CUP, we can, the board can act on those and revoke the CUP.
Correct, the ordinance outlines the procedures for, if there's violations, and if they're not corrected and whatnot, or repeated violations, then ultimately it can be brought back to the board to revoke the CUP.
Alright, thank you.
And I, I really didn't see it on the map or the design, but are you planning on an outdoor area for anything?
Yeah, I have, so the flowers to the, if you go up. Yeah, well, if you go to the current property, but I have an acre of flowers outside. I have 1,000 peony plants, but nothing...
I was thinking about events, like, you know, whether it's a retirement party or a family reunion party, do you, do you have an outdoor...
There'll be a couple picnic tables among the flowers, but otherwise, there's not, I'm not building a patio or anything right now.
For music, or a place for a band, or anything, you're not planning on that?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just because conditions are things, we have to tie to the CUP. Throw this out there for discussion purposes, it's easier to edit than create, I tried to create something here. So what I would say is, like, to putting limitations on events, I would, I would propose 15 events per year, with operating hours of 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., however, no outdoor music after 9:00 p.m. So, meaning if there's gonna be events indoors, that's something that usually isn't, can impact the neighbors. Standard hours of operations would be 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And does, hopefully, I'm looking for feedback from the applicant or other members, if that seems reasonable, and addressing all concerns.
Doesn't the county have an ordinance for 10:00 p.m.?
I would request...
I mean, I, I think, if, if the applicant's agreeable to, I think 9:00 p.m. would be, would be okay, too, but I'm just, do we need to be consistent with the ordinance? I thought Sterns County had a noise ordinance till 10:00 p.m.
I don't believe we have a noise ordinance, but we have had passed permits that we've allowed outdoor music till 10:00 p.m.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director. When it comes to noise, we operate under the state noise standard, and there's a, there's a classification change at 10 o'clock. So there's a difference in the decibel level that you're allowed after 10, which is typically why people think 10 o'clock is an ordinance, per se, but it's related to the state standard, and so then there's a change in decibels after 10:00 p.m. And it goes down dramatically, so based on the noise area classification that you have, and then the amount of decibels based on time and...
So I'm hearing 10:00 p.m. might be a better number?
Well, 10:00 p.m. is, is the change in, in decibel levels.
Decibels, yeah.
So however you guys want to administer or look at that, that's up to you.
I'm honestly, I was just trying to get the conversation started.
I was just, I didn't know, my only thing was, I think 9:00 p.m. is fine, too. Just, if consistency was an issue, that we need to...
Yeah, fair enough. I was thinking, and I said nine, because it's sunset in the summer. Longest days of the year, you're about 9:00 o'clock, but again, 10:00 p.m. is reasonable.
I'm okay, oh, sorry.
That's fine. I was gonna say, I'm okay with 10:00 p.m., and then what did you say, how many times a year?
Well, 15, and, and if that ends up limiting, limiting after a while, you can do, you know, an amendment, come back and try to adjust the CUP, but it seems like a reasonable place to start.
Yeah.
But, my question on the events is just, what constitutes an event?
Yeah, good question. It has come up before, and I forgot how it was defined.
The way we've treated it in the past is, if something's considered a special event, it's if it's happening outside of the normal working hours, or the hours that are approved, that would be considered a special event. So if she was having a workshop from 12:00 to 2:00 on a Saturday afternoon, that's not considered an event. That, that's how we've treated it in the past, so just want to make sure we're on the same page with that.
Okay.
So if we were to have a bridal shower, just hypothetically, from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00, that would not be an event?
Correct.
So...
Mr. Chair? However, then, if she has rock music out there before that time, that's not considered an event either, then, correct?
That's not how we've treated them in the past, it's just been when, the special events have been when it's happened outside of the normal allowed hours.
Okay, what would normal operating hours be, then, just in standard cut floral stuff? Like, would that be a 6:00 p.m. normal day?
For what kind of...
Now, that's a good...
So my, it, in full transparency, I plan to have, part of the building is a farm store with certain open hours that people can come and buy flowers, there's a gift shop, and there's the workspace, and then there's the space that can be rented out or hosted workshops. So different pieces of it have different hours depending on.
Yeah, okay.
Well, 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. will be your standard operating hours for either?
I don't think so, because if there is a high school sports banquet, or a company Christmas party, then I feel like 10:00 p.m. is very reasonable, and then a few times until 11:00, as we said. But that's in outdoors, right? Or I'm, sorry, I'm...
Well, that would be one of the 15 events, i-if it was after 8:00 p.m.
Okay.
The music was 10:00 p.m., the events we just said were at 11:00. If it's indoors, it's...
If it's indoors, no one's gonna be looking at it, but you want to know what your normal hours of operation, so we need the days of the week and the hours from 8:00 a.m., or from whatever, a.m. to whatever p.m.
Yeah.
You're doing, so we need to set both time and days. Is it seven days a week, or...?
Yes.
Okay, so that, that's what I needed clarified, perfect.
Tara?
I was just, I didn't want to put the applicant on the spot if you haven't, like, put that in your business plan, but, so it's, we're saying 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Standard operating hours, Monday through Friday, or Monday through Sunday.
Seven days a week?
And then...
That's what you're asking for, and then 15 events.
Then 15 times, she could go past 10:00 p.m.
For outdoor...
Can we start with...
Outdoor 20, would that be unreasonable? I just, I, I don't know.
That's why I brought it up, yeah, it's...
Or what, what is common, I guess I should ask, what do other places have?
It seems like we see a lot of 10 to 15.
That's generally our...
10:00 p.m. and 15.
Yep.
15 special events, things outside of normal operating hours.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
You know, the, the issue to me is not so much the time, because if you're having a gathering out there, and they're being quiet, you have no music out there, and you're sitting at the picnic tables, and you've got lights, and you're discussing things, that's not an issue. The, the problem I have is when you're playing music, and you've got a rock band playing, and you're serving alcohol, and they can hear three quarters of a mile down the road. Now, it doesn't sound like that's what you want to do. And so I have, I have no trouble peacefully meeting out there and, and having those long hours. What I do have a problem with is when you, you're gonna do just what I has alluded to, is unless we put parameters in there, that's gonna allow her to do those things, because that's what we have here happening in other areas.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to define right now.
Correct. And it's, and so we've got to be careful how we construct our language.
Mr. Chair?
Tara?
Just a question, are, is there anybody that wants to limit with language the type of event, to say? We can't, we're disallowing a certain type of event?
Expand on that, Tara, what kind of event are you thinking?
Well, that's what I'm asking, because, you know, if the issue is one type of activity that may or may not cause issue with the neighbors that you want to put as a condition on the permit, such as music.
Yeah, well, that's the one that typically comes up, and it's gonna come up on another application you're coming up. It's the outdoor music and the, it's not just the length, it's the, how many, what's the quantity over the course of a year? And that's generally run into the issues, which is why we're trying to define it.
Mr. Chair, you could, you know, one option would be to specifically say, you know, outdoor music, or outdoor music events are limited to 15 times per year. That way, you're not limiting the things that are happening entirely indoors.
Right.
It's just the things that are outdoors that could be disruptive. That would be an option, too.
Yeah, my, and my comment is just, it's easier to put limits on what you don't want than to limit a business by putting things that you think are appropriate for them. I don't want to do that, so...
Good suggestion.
Thank you.
I guess I'm, Mr. Chair, if I could, I'm, I guess I'm, I'm struggling a little bit with, you know, trying to balance, we want to be respectful to the neighbors, but at the same time, if we're limiting things too much, I mean, we'd want her business to be economically viable, and, you know, and if we are somehow putting limits on what she can do, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that either. I, I think, to me, it probably comes down to the noise, I agree. That could be a concern if it gets outside of the, the interior of the venue, that could be a problem. But it doesn't sound like that's what she wants to do, and so I just, I guess I'm saying is, I think we need to be respectful of the business, the property owners' desire to have an economically viable operation.
Thank you.
So based on that, Mr. Chair, what if we were to revise the conditions? Standard operating hours, 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., seven days a week.
10:00 p.m.?
Or 10:00 p.m., okay, yep, I'm, I'm good with that, 10:00 p.m.
And can you tell me, I just would like to clarify, an event goes until 10:00 p.m., and that's outside, inside? Minnesota goodbyes happen a long time, I'm letting people bring their own food, this is a crock pot, or caterer.
I think you're gonna be good there. Here's, here's what we'd throw in there. Standard hours of operation, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., limited to 10 outdoor music events per year, which helps define that, and now, the rest of the year, you're not gonna run into the issues, it's not gonna be a problem, I don't believe. Is that workable?
I think, I would say if you want to just limit the number of special events, whatever they may be, outside those normal operating hours, or is that what you're trying to do with the...
That's what I was trying, back to your point on the music, that's, that's the... That's what I was trying to, back to your point on the music, that's, that's the, outdoor music is the one that's going to be the hot button. So let's just limit that to 10 events and leave it open beyond that.
Special events...
So it went from 15 to 10? I'm just clarifying. Okay.
But it's 10 outdoor music events per year. So anything else is fine. It's just limited to 10 outdoor music events per year.
So we're not, we are, just to, so I understand, we're not...
Having, Mr. Chair, having outdoor music at an event is what we're talking about.
Yeah.
We're not saying they're having a concert series.
Yes, thank you.
What we're saying is, is that they're doing something, they're playing music, or a band, or a DJ, or whatever it is, at 10 things, 10 times outside during...
After 10:00 P.M.
During the, no, not after 10:00, just during, during the time period that they're open. 365 days a year, outdoor music can be allowed, but it's not a concert series. It's just a part of the activities that are associated, but you get it 10 times a year, is what I heard you say. Is that what we're trying to be clear about?
That's what I said, and if that becomes a problem...
Yeah, I think Shady's Long Shots has 20, if I remember right, something like that.
So if it's a number question, then, then that's for you guys to decide. How many, how many times can an outdoor event have music at it, at that particular event?
So we are not, we are not limiting the number of inside events, is that what we're saying?
On the inside.
One more thing I'd throw out there. I hate to do this at this point, but we're 45 minutes into this one, and this is something that probably you should put some thought into to make sure you're not limiting yourself, and would there be the ability to potentially continue this, let the applicant figure out the hours of oper, hours of operation, the events, and then just define what those would be in our recommended action plans tied to the CUP?
Yeah, yeah, you have that option to continuance, to get a little time to further define that.
So I'm a little bit questioning what that means. If my patrons, isn't that kind of violative of their property or their privacy rights, or what, saying what kind of event, or why are you here, or why are you throwing this?
No, 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 no. What I'm saying, rather than us voting on it tonight...
Okay.
Chair, you can describe it.
So a continuance is, we pause where we're at. We'd, we'd delay the meeting until next month to give you the opportunity to straighten out what hours of operation you'd like to see, and how many of these events are going to happen. You can bring that back to us next month and give us something that you would like to see, as opposed to potentially having us make the decision now based upon our perspective.
Well, I think the 6 to 10 with, to have that cushion 20 times a year, I think I would be okay with that.
And then music as a separate category. That's what I was hearing Tara say and Jason Krown say, correct? Special event, meaning if she needs somebody to be there after 10:00, she could do that 20 times a year, but then music is a separate endeavor, not associated with, it's just music as a separate condition, category.
Mr. Chair, Elizabeth, I want you to understand, if, if we put a pause on this and ask you to come back, it's in your favor, because this is going to allow you to have time to think through how you want to do it and come up perhaps with several options. Instead of us, if we mill it tonight and do the wrong thing and handcuff you, that's a handicap to you. We want to do this right, okay? So I want you, I want you to think about that, because if, if, if we put parameters on here that, that cuts you to not run your business like you want to, you're going to be disappointed. The issue, I think the issue we're having trouble is trying to define what a special event is, or trying to define how much music we want out there, and we have no trouble with you having your business open, and we want it to be open. But if we say from 8:00 to 8:00, there's, then that screws up all your evenings that you'd like to be doing peaceful things out there, okay? So we want to get this right, okay? Does that make sense?
That does make sense, although the timeline...
And you can, excuse me, you can also work with staff and ask them certain things by, you can call them and say, does this, what do you think? Is this going to be something we can present or not present? You can work with your numbers, too, okay?
I guess I would ask for, I, I do know that 6 to 10 with those 20 events is what I would ask for.
Okay.
Okay. And if, and if that's the conditions...
Is, if, would they all be music, outdoor music events, though?
The...
That, that's the, that's the tricky part. That'll be the hot button.
Question is, is after 10:00 P.M.?
I don't plan on any, if I'm being honest, but I would like to have the ability to do it if I needed to, or wanted to.
Yeah, okay.
I guess, is, if that's the honest answer.
Yeah.
But I don't want to...
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I think, I think the continues is a good idea, but I understand timelines.
Yeah, I, I would like to have my building open by Dahlia season.
Yeah.
But, so I think what I, what I hear on the table right now, and I'll just reiterate it, 6:00 A.M. to 10:00 P.M. standard hours of operation, which means your special events outside of 6:00 to 10:00 P.M., we would say 20 special events a year. And then another condition would be limited to 10 outdoor music events per year, period.
Where the...
That could be any time of the day.
So if I have a acoustic singer while people are picking flowers, does that count?
That would count as one of your outdoor music.
If it was defined that way, yes. Thus where the definition becomes important.
We've got to make picking flowers fun, otherwise I have to pay them.
Exactly. And that's where, this is an important part of your business plan to be successful and trying to prevent. I don't think it's going to be a problem at 10:00 A.M. in the morning to have someone play an acoustic guitar. It's, in practicality, it's not going to be an issue. It's the, it's the amplifiers bumping at 10:00 P.M. that's a problem.
Correct, is the...
The noise.
The noise.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, so to clarify this, we're talking about 30 events. You got the 20 plus the 10 music events. That's what I'm hearing.
They could overlap. I mean, if it's a special event that goes till 11:00 P.M. and they also have music...
10 music events, they've got to be part of the 20.
That's going to count as one of the 20 and one of the 10.
It's not clear.
10 can happen, 10 could happen anytime. The music could happen anytime during hours of operation, was the point. And that's why we're trying to separate out music. Because it was the thing you were concerned about. So separating out music wasn't the same as hours.
I'm not concerned about music. I'm just concerned about noise level, because there isn't, there's going to be an impact with the people that live out in that area that are used to a quiet evening. So we got to be concerned about that.
And as we indicated, as we've talked about, acoustic guitar players are a music event.
Technically, yes, it's a music event, so...
And that, again, Mr. Chair, and that's why it's, again, to think this out and how you want to write that in there is, is important, because you could also then establish the decibel level as far as what you want to have for those events. You could, you could spell that out at a certain level, which would allow you to have singers out there. People could, you could have a group of people that wanted to sing, and that's not an issue. The other thing I want to let you know, oftentimes the ordinance are complaint-driven, okay? You know, we have an ordinance on fires, okay, and, and so you can have a fire so big. Well, people that maybe, you know, let's say violate that by a foot or two, that's not an issue. But when it's 10 feet high and you, and you can see it from a quarter mile away, then that's an issue, okay? And, and, and so, you know, it's a matter of being able to get along with your neighbors. Likewise, we can set the parameters here, and if you want to change them and your, your behavior is good, you can come back and we can, you know, expand the hours and things you want to do. That's another option.
Can we restrict the hours that music is allowed? Can we do that and have unlimited music during the day, as long as it meets the decibel day laws, which I've looked it up, and that's, that's quite quiet. I don't anticipate, I think the closest neighbor, County Road 2, is in between, so can we say that?
I think you're going to be in good shape if you were to do that. Daytime, we, we just don't get complaints about daytime music hardly ever, do we? Yeah, it's, it's the nighttime. It's when the sound carries, absolutely. Sound carries and people want quiet, and that's when, that's the problem. So, yes, that would be a good way to do it. Do you have a suggestion?
Yes, so as long as I follow the state rules of music and unlimited daytime music and no amplified music after 10:00 P.M. except for the 20 events per year? Or no, either way, it's still the noise.
The noise is no matter what.
Yep, okay.
20, that's, that's, I'm just going to say that'll probably cause problems. It's going to be a lot.
Okay, 15, like you initially said, I would be okay with.
Yeah, 10 to 15 would make more sense.
15 special events outside of your out...
Outside of the hours, correct?
Yep.
And then just for clarity, what is daytime hours?
I would say 10:00 P.M., because it's sunset with the flowers, 9:30?
I'd, I'd probably, realistically, probably 8:00. I'd say 8:00 o'clock on the music side. Or if we're going to limit, once you get beyond 8:00, is, is when that clock would start ticking, yeah. Based on our experience, you'll run into challenges after that.
But I could play music inside.
Oh, absolutely. Yep.
Correct.
I will, I will agree to that and be respectful to the neighbors, and if there are complaints, I am very confident that we will reach a resolution and work within the...
Perfect, okay.
All right, Heidi.
Trying to understand everything, and I under, yeah.
This is what I understand as our conditions then would be, seven, standard operating hours, seven days a week, 6:00 A.M. to 10:00 P.M. Then we have 10 special events that would allow for outdoor music.
15?
15.
15, thank you. I have a lot of numbers on here. 15 special events that would allow music from 8:00 P.M. to 10:00 P.M.
And then music, outside music from, until 8:00?
Yep.
We need to add that as a condition.
Yep. Works on business plan side? Works by members? Okay.
Well, that was fun.
Yeah.
Other comments from the, other comments or questions from the Planning Commission?
Order for findings of fact?
Would you like to do findings of fact? Let's do findings of fact. All right, is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance? Why or why not?
Give me a second, Mr. Chair. Computer's slow. Unbelievable. Mr. Chair, I'm ready. I do believe the proposal is consistent with zoning and board, zoning ordinance number 439, section 4.8, 6.51, and 9.3.
Thank you. Does the proposal conform to the company, the comprehensive plan of the county? Please list the applicable sections.
Mr. Chair, I believe it does. Under agricultural goals, item one, it supports agriculture's desirable land use, and it does facilitate diversification of the ag economy within the county. Item four, strive for and support higher farm profitability and family farm stability. There are a few others. Business goals acknowledges tourism, has economic value, and prospective contribution of the industry to both the diversification of the county economically and for potential growth.
Perfect, thank you. Is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, I believe it is. This is an agricultural-oriented business, and we spent 45 minutes trying to tie some conditions to this CUP to ensure that it stays compatible with the existing neighborhood by addressing sensitive topics.
Thank you. Question number four, how has the applicant demonstrated that standards and criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied?
Mr. Chair, the, they came prepared. There's a plan drawing that was put together, and we spent a lot of time talking about different concerns that would address, address the reason the ordinance exists.
And there's also the 10 conditions as listed.
Yeah.
All right, are there other issues pertinent to this matter? So we do have the 10 conditions, and we do have the time, the music, and the special events. All right, further questions or comments from the board?
I have one question. Page 10 of the application, there's a reference to designing a septic system with Watab Township?
Oh, sorry.
It says Watab on it, and it should be St. Wendell, yes?
It's St. Wendell Township, but I wrote Watab Township, and I meant Watab Septic Company. I apologize.
Oh, that was confusing.
It was a typo. I apologize. Thank you. Thank you for correcting it.
Fine.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And what about the, do we have to put anything about the wetland as far as...
We do have that, a wetland determination before the construction site permit can be issued. We have that as a condition.
Okay.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I make a recommend, I make a motion, we recommend approval with the language that we discussed about hours of operation and some of those conditions, and in addition to the other recommended conditions that we have.
Hold on a second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign. Motion passes. This will be heard at the County Board Agenda on February 11th. Thank you for taking the buck.
Next time you guys do something like this, you should send this out as a wedding event center. This got sent to our neighborhood as a flower farming rural tourism, and it turned into, you can have 20 loud music events here a year. This is a fucking joke and a waste of my time, so good luck.
All right, thank you. Agenda item number three. When you're ready, Jen. Okay. Agenda item number three. The applicants are Mark Wolken and attorney Patrick Steinoff. We're going to consider a plat entitled Vulcan Shores consisting of eight residential lots in the residential 1 and Ag 40 zoning districts. The plat was submitted by Mark Wolken, Shoreview, Minnesota, according to Stearns County subdivision ordinance number 230 and land use and zoning ordinance number 439. The 15.2 acre plat is part of the northwest quarter of the southwest corner of section 27, lying between Nause Lake and County Road 49 in Wakefield Township. The property address is 16024 County Road 49, Cold Spring, Minnesota. So who visited the site? I did. Mr. Ventru.
Dave Ventru, too, I did.
Mr. Krown?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hulk?
I did.
Mr. Blankish?
Yes, I did.
Ms. Oster.
I did not.
Yes, I did.
Okay, so, staff report. Whenever you're ready.
All right, good evening, Planning Commission members. So before you tonight is an eight lot plat entitled Wolken Shores, submitted by Mark Wolken. This property is, as you explained, it's on Nause Lake and County Road 49 south of Cold Spring. Just a little background information, the boundary of this plat is a private cemetery under Minnesota statute 307.08, and because the origin of the cemetery is Native American, the Minnesota Indian Affairs Council is the authority for reviewing and providing direction related to the cemetery. So we've got additional information on that in the report here, and we have representatives from the Minnesota Indian Affairs Council present to speak to it as well. So the proposal is to split the property into eight lots. You can see the property's kind of unique because there's two... kind of unique because there's two separate parcels that are already taken out and owned by different people, kind of in the middle of the property. But on the left side, which is the north end, you see lot one. And then in the middle, there's three lots. And then to the right, which is the south side of the property, there's four more lots. So they had an analysis done for septic suitability, and it showed that the soils are supportive for septic systems. However, it's not entirely guaranteed a septic system could be installed due to the fact that it's a cemetery out there. Setbacks are shown on the plat. There is room to meet all setbacks, including lake setback and road setback. Wetlands on the property have been delineated. For the most part, they follow the shoreline, although on the very southern lot, there is more wetland, and so any buildings on that lot would have to be twenty-five feet from the wetland. There's no feedlots within seven hundred feet. County Highway reviewed the plat, and to minimize how many new approaches we have on the county road, they are allowing... Their letter in here has outlined how many approaches are allowed, and that's shown on the drawings as well. They'll need easements to cover those shared accesses. Because the plat as a whole will create over an acre of new impervious surfaces, they did develop a stormwater management plan. And so the stormwater plan shows, you can see on the screen... I should get my pointer out. Okay, so we've got some bigger regional basins. This is one of them, and then to the south, there's another one. Those, the driveway approaches and the regional basins will be installed by the developer. And then the private basins, which is, there's two of them here, will be installed by the homeowner when they do construction on their property. That's how the plan is designed at this time. And as, as usual, will require a financial guarantee, so the developer would have to put up a guarantee to ensure the driveway approaches and those two regional ponds get put in before we do any permitting out there. They will need to do the ten-foot drainage and utility easement along County Road forty-nine, and then also easements around those regional ponds. Property, of course, is within shoreland. There are small areas of floodplain as well. The building sites are all up and out of the floodplain. Now, as to the cemetery, the... MYAC will speak in more detail about this, but we're proposing, if the plat were to be approved, we would propose some language in the subdivision agreement addressing it. And I guess I'll get to that when I get to the comments. So plating committee did review this last month in December. They did vote three to two to recommend denial. And at that meeting, though, we got comments from the other departments and agencies, so those are listed out in your staff report there. The Park Department and Parks Commission have requested cash in lieu of land dedication for the park dedication fee. That would be one thousand dollars per lot. Wakefield Township reviewed and approved the plat in December with two conditions, that the driveway easements be private, that the driveway and easements be privately maintained, not for public use or maintenance. And then the infiltration basins and stormwater stuff also be privately maintained, so they don't have any interest in maintaining those. Okay, so as far as ordinance compatibility, so for plats, we look at the zoning ordinance as well as the subdivision ordinance. And in the subdivision ordinance, which is exhibit A in your packet, we outline several sections that are applicable to this case. So, and I'll just point out a couple, section one point four in our subdivision ordinance, one point four point three, actually. Each lot created through a subdivision shall be suitable in its natural state for the proposed use with minimal alteration. Suitability analysis shall occur, shall consider, among other items, significant historical sites and any other features of the natural land where the impact likely is to be harmful to the welfare of the residents. Another section I will cite is five point three point seven G, where it says each lot shall have sufficient buildable lot area, which for the purpose of the ordinance shall be defined as the contiguous area of the lot, which is sufficient in area to accommodate the construction of water supply system, sewage treatment systems, buildings, and driveways. Exhibit B is sections from the comprehensive plan. Now, on our comp plan, the land use designation for future land use is concentrated development. So certainly, this would be consistent with concentrated development. And then I did cite in their statements from the living pillar, living goals in the lakeshore living policies for your consideration. And, okay, so we have a long list of proposed conditions if the plat were to be approved. Do you want me to skim through those now?
Yeah, if you were gonna, yeah.
Okay, perfect. So the first one would be our standard requirement for a declaration of restriction to be recorded with the purpose of protecting the two septic sites on each lot. They need to be maintained and undisturbed and set aside for sewage treatment use. And then a subdivision agreement with the following items. Letter A addressing the private cemetery. So according to the Office of the State Archaeologists, the boundary of the plat is cemetery two one SN zero zero one three. It's considered a woodland era, American Indian burial mound, habitation, village, and artifacts scatter. Four circular mounds are present on the site. MYAC shall be contacted for each instance of proposed ground disturbance in a formal review request submitted each time at the site as it's a protected cemetery under Minnesota statute. It's imperative to note that each lot is considered cemetery and needs to go through the formal review process as the cemetery boundaries encompass the entire property. Even if one of the lots doesn't have a mound on it, it will need to be disclosed during the sale process that it's within a cemetery boundary. I think that's just an important clarification to make. There are a number of known mounds on the site, but even where there aren't mounds, the entire property is a cemetery. There may be additional remains or artifacts on the property not within those mounds. Number three, certain lots are subject to a mound management plan and will be disseminated upon final sale to the landowners. Because of its content, it's considered private data pursuant to Minnesota statute. MYAC approval is required prior to issuing any permits, approvals, or any ground disturbing activity for all lots within Vulcan Shores. And then related to the construction site standards, best management practices shall be used when building on the property to manage such things like erosion control. In order to protect the septic sites out there, they need to be roped off and not disturbed. Residential dwellings shall be constructed within the R-one zoning district on each lot. This is, this next item is not a normal thing you would see, but for this situation, we felt it was important to require successful installation of a well and septic system. And stormwater facilities shall be completed before we'd actually issue a construction permit. So we need to ensure that those utilities are able to get put in without any discovery of Indian burial, you know, artifacts or remains. And only upon the successful installation of the utilities, then we would permit a house to be there. So no permits or other approvals shall be issued for lots within Vulcan Shores until the stormwater facilities are successfully installed. In letter C addressing wetlands, the wetland delineation has been approved. It's valid for five years from the date of the decision, which was June twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-four. A twenty-five foot setback is required for wetlands, and wetland review is required before we would issue a construction permit for lot four, block three. Related to stormwater management, the shared driveways and regional basins need to be put in by the developer in accordance with the approved plan. They need to submit the financial guarantee to ensure it's properly installed. Release of the financial guarantee is contingent on an as-built drawing from the engineer that the conditions meet the original design specifications, and then a site visit by staff to ensure erosion control is satisfactory and the vegetation is at seventy percent coverage. The regional basins shall be maintained in perpetuity by the homeowners association in accordance with the approved maintenance plan. I don't know why letter E is in there. And then, still under stormwater, number two, construction of the basins on lot one, block one, and lot three, block two, those are those two private basins, they are the responsibility of the property owner. In conjunction with the construction on the lot, need to be installed in accordance with the approved plan, submit a financial guarantee to ensure they get put in properly before we issue the construction permit. And then release of the financial guarantee is contingent on the as-built drawing and approval from an engineer and a site visit by county staff. Those private basins shall be maintained in perpetuity by the property owner on which the basin lies. The proposed basins have been designed to receive drainage generated by eleven thousand square feet of impervious surfaces per lot. So the driveway entrances are the only impervious surfaces proposed with, with the construction of the regional basins. Okay, number three, water supply verification is required, so we still need water test results. Eight lots requires one water test for nitrates to make sure the nitrate level is suitable. A highway certificate will also be recorded with the final plat. That just gets those highway comments on record. Five, a homeowners association and other related documents shall be created and recorded with the final plat for the purpose of maintaining the shared driveways and regional stormwater basins. And number six, again, repeating that the financial guarantee equal to one hundred and twenty-five percent of the grading and erosion and sediment control costs shall be submitted before final plat approval. Seven, the drainage and utility easements need to be submitted with the final plat around the regional stormwater basins, and they need to provide room for maintenance around the basins and access to the basins. And eight, ingress, egress, and utility easements are required for the shared driveways. And then lastly, a seven thousand dollar parkland dedication fee is required before final plat approval. And then in your packet were several agency correspondences we received from MYAC, from County Highway, from the Parks Department. And then I also emailed you a couple of letters we had received, public hearing letters, but I can go over those during the hearing.
Jennifer, for the next couple items, this is a little different. So we have the applicant here and also have MYAC. How do we want to handle?
Yes, when the public hearing is open, MYAC is prepared to come up and speak to the cemetery.
Thank you. So applicant introductions.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Pat Steinhoff, fifty-three fifty-three Gamble Avenue, Minneapolis. I'm Mr. Watkins' attorney. He's the applicant. He's right here. So Mr. Watkins asked me to be here because the main issue that came up at the plat committee was essentially what we see as a legal issue concerning the, basically jurisdictional issues and what the county has the authority to approve and what MYAC has the authority to review and approve, and the sequencing of the approvals. So obviously, this is cemetery, so MYAC potentially has jurisdiction to review and make recommendations on any any plans for building, for grading, for excavation, et cetera. But we're not there yet. This is, this is a plat approval. The plat committee made a recommendation to deny, basically because they didn't know whether Mr. Watkins or his successors could successfully get MYAC approval. But that is, that's premature, in our view. The county, this is the county, this isn't MYAC. The county needs to apply its plat approval criteria in its subdivision ordinance, its zoning criteria in its zoning ordinance. From what I've seen, I've never seen any suggestion that this isn't a fully conforming plat under the subdivision ordinance, under the zoning ordinance. I don't think the county has any discretion to deny it. I, I think the county should approve it. You should recommend approval. It would be appropriate to put a condition that Mr. Watkins has to cooperate with MYAC in getting approvals from MYAC when necessary, when he wants to do grading or building or whatever. But, but that shouldn't be the basis of, of the county board's decision on the plat. The county board should just look at the county ordinances. It should leave cemetery issues, MYAC issues for another day. Mr. Watkins can work through those issues with, with MYAC. But he needs a plat approved first, obviously. You can't have a building permit application for MYAC to review if there isn't a approved plat first. And, you know, maybe that's not the most efficient way to do it, not the way that I would have designed the approval sequence, but that's what the legislature has, has decided. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have about, about that issue. Mr. Watkins is here. He can answer any questions about the design or the history of, of the site. He's, it's been his family's farm for many, many decades. He thinks he can successfully do this development. He has a pretty good idea of where he thinks mounds are, et cetera. He thinks that this site can be developed. But there are issues, but those issues aren't gonna be ripe for discussion until after the plat is approved. And there's a building permit and grading permit plans for MYAC to, to review. So on behalf of Mr. Watkins, I ask that you recommend approval. Thank you.
Mr. Hulk, would you like to introduce yourself and address?
I am Mark Wolken. I live in Shoreview, Minnesota. My grandfather owned this farm since forever, and he eventually passed it on to my father, who eventually passed it on to us. So I am more than familiar with this property. Gosh, we've got over a hundred years on this farm in our family. So I'm pretty uncomfortable with anything legal, but I'm very comfortable with the property. So if you have any questions, I can pretty much tell you that there is not gonna be anybody that knows more about it than I do, so.
Thank you. Questions from the commission?
Yes, I had a question. I was a little confused reading the, I think it was the minutes from the plating committee meeting, but could you clarify the requirements that Mr. Wolken has to disclose this, these lots as being part of a cemetery? But then there was something about he was restricted in disclosing some aspects or some data. I was really confused by that. And then I guess what, what happens if in the, if this plat is approved and construction commences and there's not an obvious burial mound and, you know, remains are encountered? I mean, what, what happens then?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I will let MYAC answer those questions. They are the expert on that.
Okay.
So don't forget when they come up to make sure you get those addressed.
I can, I can address it partially if you want me to. I've been there for forever, so I know where things are and where they aren't. We have two mounds on our plat, and two mounds only, and they've been there forever. They've been there from day one, as long as we go back.
Chair, I was gonna say, the question was just what you can disclose and when, not what's actually on the property.
Just trying to clarify everything for him.
Yeah, my, my question, if it's more appropriate for the next MYAC, I can, I'll withdraw my question at this time.
Mr. Chair, question for applicants. How did you guys arrive at the eight lots for this particular parcel?
I hired an engineer and a surveyor that does a lot of work for the, in the county, so I believe they're pretty well-known and reputable. And they came up with actually ten lots, that everything fit to their understanding, everything fit to satisfy the county's requirements on ten lots. But MYAC asked us to observe two buffer zones around the two mounds on our, on our plat by adding a fifty-foot buffer in each direction from the mounds. So it would be like fifty feet, the buff, or the mound, and another fifty feet. So if the mound were, just for the sake of discussion, fifty feet, it would be fifty, fifty, and fifty. So for a hundred and fifty feet, we can't build there. So based on that, we redid the plat down to eight lots. We could have made nine fit and still met MYAC's expectations, but we chose to go down to eight. down to eight. And on the lot that has, the lots that have a mound, we gave obviously more room so that you could put in a home and meet all the septic requirements and all that and not infringe on the buffer.
Okay, thank you.
If I could ask, which lots have mounds on them?
Mr. Chair, that's private data.
That's private.
So maybe at this point, if we could open the hearing and have Mayak come up, that would be helpful.
Okay, let's open the public hearing. So let's begin with the Mayak folks. So if you have questions, please bring them to us. So direct them to us and try to avoid cross-talk to each other. Okay.
Thank you.
Name and address.
Brandon Elkhayer. I'm the Legislative and Policy Director with the Minnesota Indian Affairs Council. I reside in St. Paul, Minnesota. I just want to start here with a bigger, broader picture here, and then we're happy to field some of your questions. First and foremost is the classification of the property itself. It has been classified a cemetery. And this is the classification that was placed on this property in 1979. So 41 years this has been a property classified as a cemetery. More to your point, the classification never comes off, just so we're clear, unless there's a whole, it would literally be an act of God to have the classification come off because we're saying we're removing all the remains that are located within that property and moving them to a different space, which is not something that's consistent or comports with the statute 307.08.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. When you say this property is classified as a cemetery, is this not a piece of a larger parcel that then was split up? So when you say this parcel, are you referring to just this piece or are you referring to the piece that's on the other side of the road as well?
Yep, go ahead, Lilly.
Yep, so as you can see here, it continues down where this blue line is. It goes up. The cemetery site continues into this. It follows down. So when we're discussing Mr. Wilkens' property.
Okay, but the property was much larger at one time because the county just had acquired that and made it into the county park. Does the cemetery boundaries include the area up into the channel?
Into the line. Yeah, the cemetery boundary continues.
Mr. Chair, for the record. Oh, go ahead.
I was going to say, for the record, my colleague Lilly from the Cultural Resource Team at the Minnesota Indian Affairs Council has shown the boundaries of the cemetery on a map. Is that sufficient for the record? Okay. And Lilly will go into more ways on how we can get, or what's going to be consistent with Mr. Wilkens' plan for development here. We are not here to say no. In fact, we're in talks with Mr. Wilkens on actually looking to acquire this property from the state perspective. However, if any of you've ever dealt with state mobility, we know that that moves very slowly. So we had the meeting last month with Mr. Wilkens. We have not had a chance yet to actually sit down with Mr. Wilkens to talk about purchasing this property from him as-is. And then we would end up putting it into conservancy to maintain the status of being undevelopable or developable with a vast amount of restrictions. So I wanted to really highlight the classification piece here as a cemetery because what that means for any future property purchasers, and I think it speaks more to your point of disclosure of data. Mr. Wilkens is privy to all the data from the cemetery site, including all the burial mounds. However, if we were to do, if he was to get an approval and start selling the plats to interested parties, the disclosure to any purchasing party would occur at that point. We are working right now with our various county attorneys across the state to get property like this put into, get some marker on deeds, but that's a future conversation. For now, property like this, the classification piece almost makes it impossible for us to approve a land disturbance development plan. And my coworker, colleague here, will go into that. Do you want me to pass out those things?
Oh, sure. Let me hand them to her real quick.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lilly Garrity. I'm Cultural Resource Manager at the Minnesota Indian Affairs Council, and I reside in St. Paul, Minnesota. Shelley is handing out some packets for you, and I have one in front of me, and we can go through it, and I can answer any questions you might have about the legal or statutory processes that we are the regulatory authority for.
Just a quick, you're going to want these back, right?
So I took the non-public data out of these packets since this is not a closed meeting, so it is fine to keep these packets for your reference.
Okay.
Okay, so the first page is the simplified Minnesota Statute 30708 subdivision 10 process. So 30708 is the Minnesota Private Cemeteries Act. The Minnesota Indian Affairs Council Cultural Resources Team is the regulatory authority in regards to archaeological Native American cemeteries and burials, including human remains and grave goods. So in a case such as this, the project proposer will develop plans for a proposed ground disturbance project. They fill out our review request form and submit it to our office. Statutorily, we get a 45-day review period upon receipt of completed review form and all appropriate documents. And after that, we will issue a formal response. There are two options for the formal response, either approve or reject. So if approved, the project may move forward with the stipulations followed. The cost does fall onto the project proposer, whether that be a landowner, developer, et cetera. If rejected, the project cannot move forward, and any ground disturbance would be a willful and nulling violation of Minnesota Statute 30708 subdivision 10. On the next page, we have simplified process for the approved ground disturbance within American Indian burial or cemetery sites. So this would be the case for every act of ground disturbance. So it could be a house, a deck, a driveway, a mailbox, anything where you are moving the dirt. Has to go through this entire process and be approved by my office for each homeowner, each developer, for every single plat on this entire property. So if approved with stipulations, there are two options. So the landowner or project proposer must hire a qualified professional archaeologist to complete any archaeological survey or monitoring as required by the Minnesota Indian Affairs Council. There is an option that Mayak Cultural Resources staff, so myself and my coworkers, and interested tribal historic preservation office staff, may complete or be present during archaeological survey or monitoring. However, we cover all public and private lands and waterways in the entire state of Minnesota, and we have three employees in the Cultural Resources Department, so that's not always an achievable goal. Also, an inadvertent discoveries plan must be developed by a qualified professional archaeologist or the Mayak Cultural Resources Department. I have included on the next page an example of an inadvertent discoveries plan for the discovery of human remains on the property during any development or ground disturbance, but we can get to that in a minute. So after, if both archaeological survey and archaeological construction monitoring is required, we've got a couple different situations. So if it's only archaeological survey, if it's private property, which in this case it is, so the methodology just has to be approved by the Cultural Resources Department and survey commences. In the case of human remains, burials, or grave goods, if they are encountered, the inadvertent discoveries plan will be followed, and then development will be either completed or halted. If archaeological and construction monitoring is required, private property, as is the case in this instance, methodology must be approved by Mayak Cultural Resources staff, and ground disturbance may commence with archaeological and construction monitoring. And then in the case of human remains, burials, or grave goods being encountered during any of the ground disturbing activities, it would halt, the inadvertent discoveries plan would be followed, and development would either continue at a later date or would be canceled. So the next document is the inadvertent discoveries plan in the case of human remains. So this is a draft document that the Office of the State Archaeologists and the Minnesota Indian Affairs Council share as we have joint duties under the Minnesota Private Cemeteries Act. So we've outlined the statutory requirements for the event of human remains being found during ground disturbing activities. So action one is to immediately halt work. Work around the discovery will cease until a determination has been made as to whether the remains are human. Implementing a buffer zone with a minimum of a 50-foot radius around the discovery. Temporary fencing may be used as a physical indication of the buffer zone. Construction equipment, tools, or machines used within the buffer zone shall not be further operated or moved. No authorized personnel, vehicles, equipment, or photos are allowed. Action two is to immediately call local law enforcement, as this may be a crime scene. So we have a spot to have the name and phone number or other contact information for law enforcement there. If it's a crime scene or non-archaeological, which is defined as being less than 50 years old, it will fall to local law enforcement for jurisdiction. Action three is notifying the appropriate authority. So if it is unrelated to a crime scene or archaeological, meaning more than 50 years old, jurisdiction falls to the Office of the State Archaeologists and/or Mayak. So in this case, it's American Indian, so it falls to my agency. Action four is a mitigation. So burial disturbance mitigation will be developed and directed by the appropriate authority, in this case, the Minnesota Indian Affairs Council Cultural Resources Department. Action five is work resumption. Ground disturbing activities within the buffer zone may not proceed until written permission from the appropriate authority is given, and then there is the contact information for the Office of the State Archaeologists and the Minnesota Indian Affairs Council.
So we can do a real-world example here of what this would look like. It came up during the plat board meeting, which was, I think the example was a 25-year-old family wants to start a family and build their dream home, and they purchased one of these properties. Even the installation of a mailbox on their property is going to require to go through that process steps that are in front of you today, and with a 45-day review process. An archaeologist coming out to make sure that the hole they're digging for the mailbox post is being done in a certain way, and this is just for a mailbox. That's not for a septic tank. I mean, all of that, all of the different ground disturbances are going to have to go through this 45-day process. So with these restrictions, you see how cumbersome this could be for a new family or anyone else wanting to build their dream home. So I just want to put that out there as a real-world example of what this looks like in practice.
Mr. Chair, can we just, so let's just clarify that. So if the lots would then be sold, and as soon as they would make plans to develop them, even if they were going to go and do a test site for a well?
Correct. It has to go through, yep, any kind of ground disturbance, any testing for septic, any testing for wells, electric, anything like that, any utilities. If you're going to dig up the ground, we have to go through this process.
And there's another piece that's attached to here. Because of the unique status and classification of this land being a cemetery, mortgages aren't possible. So underwriting, oh, sorry, underwriting for this property, you're not going to find a mortgage company willing to do that because of its designation as a cemetery. Not to mention, underwriting for homeowners' insurance is going to be also another hurdle. So I just wanted to keep that clear. There's many, many, many hurdles that have to be cleared in order to get, even to get to ground disturbance.
So a question, you use the mailbox example. If we go back even earlier, if they're putting survey pins in, would the pounding of survey pins require Mayak approval or review?
Yes, that is correct. Even driving heavy machinery counts as ground disturbance. So like if you think about like big XL trucks, that kind of thing, driving on the soil, that can cause soil compaction and the breaking of the human remains in their graves.
Mr. Chair. Obviously, we see some already established homes that are on that property. Now, do they predate that legislation or those parameters?
Actually, and this is an interesting conversation we've been having with many county attorneys, because the enforceability piece has not been there, because the educational component regarding the Graves Protection Act has not been robust. And so we're now rectifying that now, especially on properties that have this designation in particular, which is a grave or cemetery.
So in terms of, you were talking about statutory enforcement, unlike many of the actions we have that come before us are violations, this is a criminal act. So if somebody is found in violation, not only is that a civil act, they are also dealing with a criminal process, and that includes everyone involved in the process.
That's correct.
Continuing on with my packet. Sorry, it's a lot of papers. We have an example of a redacted mitigation plan that was actually used during a burial mitigation in the state of Minnesota to give you kind of a real-life example of what kind of activities would happen in the case of finding human remains. So methods are outlined, archaeological methods such as shovel skimming, trawling, sifting, collection of remains, daily practices, pedestrian survey, mapping with GIS, soil chlorine, STPs, which are shovel test pits, as well as formal excavation. That is just for the actual recovery of any people who are buried that are encountered. Additionally, there would be reburial plans. So again, you know, we have the STPs here, so that is to make sure that we are not impacting any other archaeological site or burial when we reinter these individuals. Sometimes we do construct what is called a reburial mound. That's not always the case. Sometimes they do not get a mound and just have a, what you'd think of as more of a modern burial. And then we have what's called a mound management plan. The mound management plan in this case is applicable to each plat or proposed plat that has a mound on it. There is a mound management plan drafted up for the Wilkens' property, but it would have to be edited for the additional plats if approved. Mound management plan outlines appropriate measures to be taken to respect the remains and protect them, and what the responsibilities of the property owner would be under state statute. Additionally, there are special considerations in the mitigation plan. Some examples would be no photos of human remains or grave goods, not necessary to record certain specific data, as we are not interested in scientific evaluation. We are instead interested in reentering these individuals. The next document I have is a highlighted version of the Minnesota Private Cemeteries Act 307.08. I will just read through a couple of the highlighted portions for you. So the legislative intent and scope is that all human burials, human remains, and human burial grounds shall be accorded equal treatment and respect for human dignity without reference to their ethnic origin, cultural backgrounds, or religious affiliations. The provisions of this section shall apply to all human burials, human remains, or human burial grounds found on or in all public or private lands and waters in Minnesota. Now we get to the point about criminal violations. So it's a felony or gross misdemeanor for subdivision 2A, 1, and 2, for intentionally, willfully, or knowingly destroying, mutilating, or injuring human burials, burial grounds, or associated grave goods, and then also operating without the consent of the appropriate authority. For gross misdemeanor, it would be like defacing any monuments, gravestones, et cetera, removing fencing, discharging firearms, and the like. And then additionally, subdivision 2C, a person who intentionally, willfully, or knowingly fails to comply with any provision of this fails to comply with any provision of this section is guilty of a misdemeanor. Then, if we forward to landowner responsibilities, application by a landowner for permission to develop or disturb non-burial areas within assessed or recorded burial grounds shall be made to, and if you flip the page to number two, the Indian Affairs Council and other appropriate authority in the case of American Indian burials. And then, we go to your previous question about landowner responsibilities. So, landowners with assessed or suspected human burial grounds on their property are obligated to inform prospective buyers of the burial ground. Now, this is a little bit tricky and a little bit confusing because of the statutory language, but what would happen in this case is Mr. Woken is obligated to tell prospective buyers this property is a cemetery, and this is the law. Now, if they, when they purchase the property, they have access to what we call the site files. That is security data under 13.37 Minnesota statute, and it is only available to people such as yourselves or Environmental Services when it's part of your job, or the legal landowner. So, they wouldn't be able to know the contents of the cemetery. They wouldn't be able to know the location of the mounds until they are legal owner. Additionally, construction and development plan review. For private lands, landowner or developer shall submit construction and development plans to the state archaeologists for review before plans are finalized and prior to any disturbance within the burial area. If American Indian, plans shall also be submitted to the Indian Affairs Council. And then, the subdivision 11 is about burial sites data, and it cites 13.37, and that persons who gain access to this data are subject to liability under 13.08 and the penalty established by section 13.09 if improperly used or further disseminate the data. Use of this information must be approved by the appropriate authority. In this case, it would be the Mayak Cultural Resources team. Additionally, I have highlighted a few of the definitions, but I would like to talk about number H, or letter H, which means is disturbed, and that means any activity that harms the physical integrity or setting of a human burial or human burial ground. If you have any additional questions for me, I will stand for them.
So, that's a lot of information. So, let's continue the public hearing with Mayak, and then we'll move to other folks so we can keep everything divided. Questions?
I do have a question. And I think you answered my original one, but I don't know who to address this question to. Maybe it's staff, I'm not sure. But hypothetically, if we were to approve this plat, it sounds like these lots have significant buyer beware issues associated with them. I mean, it feels like construction on any one of these lots could be delayed months, if not years because of, does the county, by approving this plat, are we opening the county up for potential litigation or lawsuit if things are delayed beyond our control? Maybe it's Mayak or whatever. I don't, does that make, does that make sense, the question?
I think I understand the question, Mr. Chair. Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director. I think the key here is if you, as a planning commission, recommend approval to the county board, and then the county board says, yes, we approve these lots, we all recognize there's a significant hurdles to any and all, any and all ground disturbing activity. How, how will that? Here's what we know. When people buy lots, they have an expectation.
Right.
That's a decision that they're making once they buy a lot, knowing all of the hurdles that that will, that they will encounter. In most cases, and in the majority of the cases when we subdivide land, we don't have these types of hurdles. We can check for septic, we can check for setbacks, which is why Jennifer said it meets those standards. The question is, it's not those standards that are the issue. It's the, it's all of the other questions because when they come back, they will go to the board and say, Mr. Commissioner, or Madam Commissioner, I can't build on this property, and you platted this property. Those are the things that happen. And we're going to say, yep, because it meets this standard, we can create a lot. Now, how you use the lots, there's two processes, right? There's subdivision, how we create the lot, and then there's how we use the lot. Are there other uses that if you divided this, they could be utilized on that property? Possibly. They could camp on it, but they can't put a tent stake in the ground. If, there's, there are limitations. So, you have to, this is the weighing and balancing part of this that you guys are responsible for looking at. We just know how activities occur and what we see. We're not telling you that there would be litigation. We don't know if somebody would have that. We, we have within our rights the process, and we're trying to go through the process, but we also have purpose and intent of why we do ordinances, and that's what's in front of you.
And I understand the question is hypothetical, and it maybe isn't fair, but at the same time, the disclosure issue and who's responsible for it is concerning to me because if we're, I think, and maybe it goes, maybe it's your issue, not ours, I don't know, but it just, yeah.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Benson, Dave, I guess that's where I'm, I want to know where we're taking this, and I want to know where Mayak is because our, you haven't told us, you gave us information. Are you in opposition for this project to move forward? Do you want us to approve this plat and take it further, or are you advocating that we don't approve this? What are you advocating?
We are simply delivering the facts here. We're not advocating one way or another. That is within your purview. We are sitting here letting you know that there are insurmountable restrictions on this property for any home buyer that comes in, and that is our purpose for today. We can't give an opinion on how Mr. Woken handles his private property.
And that's, that's what I wanted to know. So, you're not necessarily in opposition to this, but rather just giving information? And again, it was the Plating Commission that denied it?
The Plating Committee recommended denial based on all the information they had and considering the purpose and intent sections of the ordinance. That's my belief. Jason, you were at the Plating Committee, you can speak to that maybe?
Yeah, it was, it was, as Mayak indicated and during the evidence presented, we believed that had, if this plan, if this plat as designed moves forward, there are substantial challenges and conflicts that will arise for future landowners to develop the site. So, while it is not technically a non-buildable site, it is awfully close to reaching that standard because of the challenges, because we're not just talking about the mound. I mean, it's everything on the site. So, we had a lot of questions. You know, he brought up the mailbox example. We talked about the stormwater management. If homeowner, the homeowners association needs to have a Mayak thing to clean that. So, they have to have a review every 10 years unless they permanently develop that site. So, while not fully unbuildable, we wanted, we were concerned about the potential for significant conflicts with future landowners moving forwards.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to address Mr. Woken. Mr. Woken, do you, do you see that we are in somewhat of a dilemma trying to decide which way to take this? Is it, but is your intent to just go ahead and move it forward?
My intention is to be 100% above board and legal.
Okay.
We have no interest in deceiving anyone. I have a list of about 50 people that have already emailed me the last two years begging to buy a lot if we get this developed.
You want 51? I mean, it's a beautiful piece of property.
Thank you. Thank you. I've worked hard on it. We've had it for over 100 years. I plant trees on it. I work my tail off to make it nice. That's how the county wanted the park.
Right.
But to answer your question, we have no secrets here. I'm not interested in the lawsuit any more than you folks are. So, all of those people on that list, you know, about a once-a-month mailing from me, kind of an update as to where we're at and why it's taking so long?
Oh, sorry. And I am, I'm more than honest with them. I tell them every single step of the way what the issues could be, what the issues might be, and I tell them eventually you will need to go to Mayak and the county to find, before you even express an interest in actually buying something, and make sure that you know all of the rules.
Right. Mr. Chair, and so, Mr. Woken, my question then is, do we proceed and move forward and develop these lots or potentially try to develop these lots, considering if we get, have a denial at the plating, I don't know which way this board is going to go, and then eventually comes then to the board? Can these issues be resolved before we take it any further, or do you want to do that, or you just want to push it forward and then see how it plays out after that, after the properties are sold, if they can be, can be sold?
So, Mr. Commissioner, can I address that? Well, first of all, I'm a land use lawyer. It is not unusual at all for one site to have concurrent jurisdiction by multiple government agencies. So, you're the county, you're supposed to be granting plat approval, that's Mayak. They grant their approvals. I mean, some sites have DNR, MPCA, watershed district. The idea that you are creating some kind of liability for the county because some other agency might deny some other permit, I mean, you can ask your county attorney, that's just not, that's not a, it should not be a valid worry for this body. I mean, it happens all the time. I've never dealt with Mayak, but this is not, not a uncommon situation. And to answer your question, I mean, we can't even get to Mayak, so he can't get this figured out at this stage. He needs a plat approved so he has lots, and then he or somebody else can develop plans to develop that lots, you know, take their mailbox, mailbox installation plan, get it approved by them or not, but that can't happen until after the plat is approved. So, there's a sequence of how things are supposed to go here. We're supposed to get approval from you for the plat, and then we deal with, you know, the township.
Correct. But, but, but does the process end if we deny?
Well, sure, but I mean, what would be your basis for denying it? Based on your ordinances, I don't think you'd have any.
We've got a recommendation from the Plating Commission.
Which I disagree with, and I ask that you not follow it.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion. Do we have anything else here on the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, there's a letter, and there may be more members of the public as well. And I also wanted to just mention one item. We do need a decision from this board tonight unless Mr. Woken would be willing to sign a waiver for allowing additional time. And I would agree with Mr. Steinhoff where I don't know that, there's, there's not additional information to be gotten in terms of the cemetery. You know, there's, it is a cemetery, that's the status, and we have the layout of what that means and what a property owner would have to go through to attempt to construct something out here. So, my belief is continuing it to try and get more information or more of a firm answer from the state isn't, won't be fruitful because we have what we're going to get.
So, for Mayak, do we have any other questions from the Plating Commission members for Mayak?
No.
Okay. Anybody else from the public want to, thank you for your testimony?
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public would like to provide testimony on this?
I had a couple of questions, if I can sneak them in, is that okay or no?
Let's have the comments. So, let's have the written comments, and then you can respond.
Sure.
Yeah.
First letter I had was from Mr. Steinhoff. So, and I sent that to you guys last week, and I'm sure you had a chance to read it. And he also highlighted his stance, so I don't think I need to read through that one. Okay. And then, the other letter I have here is from Teresa Bellis on Canals Lake Circle, and she states, "I'm opposed to approval of this application for the proposed plat called Woken Shores." She cites concerns with ongoing water traffic, excessive noise from large groups of weekend boaters, and this being one of the few remaining areas of natural shoreline. So, at the end, she summarizes it by saying, "Development of the plat will be detrimental to the serenity and attractiveness of Canals Lake by causing further loss of the remaining natural shoreline, increased boat traffic on Canals Lake, increased noise, crowding, and interference with peaceful surroundings for people who own homes on the lake, loss of shoreline habitat for wildlife nesting areas, loss of shoreline protecting wildlife that migrates through Canals Lake every spring and fall, and loss of overall beauty, peace, attractive ambiance of the lake for current landowners." So, for those reasons, she opposes approval of the application.
All right, Mr. Woken, feedback, comments?
On that?
On anything you've heard?
Well, on that, I guess all I can say is, you know, we've made that a beautiful piece of property by taking care of it, planting trees on it, and being respectful of the mounds that are there. Those are the only two mounds that are left, and we own them, and we protected them, I'm sorry.
For over 100 years. So, I think our heart's in the right place. We've done a great job. I question how a lady can write in and say, "I live on the lake and love it, but nobody else can." I'm so sorry. That, that one doesn't work for me. But I would also like to raise one point, that the county is proposing to build all their park buildings within the cemetery as well. And I'm sure if you ask the county how they felt about this, they would say, yeah, it's, you could call it insurmountable if you want to in order to meet all of Mayak's concerns in order to build there. I wouldn't call it insurmountable. I'd say you just have to do your due diligence and follow the rules, which is what we intend to do. So, if the county can build and expects to build boat landings, parking lots, bathrooms, park buildings, and all under Mayak's rules, I don't know how we can't build under those rules. That's all we want to do. We're not trying to cheat. We aren't trying, I mean, we've been farming that land for 100 years, but now we can't put a tent stake in it, and that's a tough thing to swallow, but we respect that if that's the rule. We don't see those rules being imposed on anyone else who currently lives within that plat. I've talked to the people that own the home in the center. They don't even know who Mayak is. They've been there about five years, they've never even heard of Mayak. So, I kind of question where Mayak is coming from in terms of, do you really want to enforce these rules? Have you done what's fair here if you're saying, "I can't put in a mailbox, but somebody else can build a home and plow their yard and grade things and bury two mounds that were there?" I don't see any reaction from Mayak on any of that. And again, they don't even know who Mayak is. So, it's hard for me to sit here and listen to them say, "This is how we're going to enforce this, and we're going to make it so hard that nobody can succeed." Excuse me, but people are succeeding right now, and you haven't said one word to them, and they've built homes there, garages, driveways, buried mounds. There are only four mounds ever in existence on this entire piece. Two of them are gone now because of that. We have the only remaining two. We've always kept track of them. We've never touched them. They're protected. I offered that land to Mayak for free. I said, "Take this lot. I'll design it with the lot that has two mounds on one lot, and I'll give it to you," in an effort to make this good for everybody. They were not interested. I got no response whatsoever. I don't know what else more than that I can do to basically make, state my case. I mean, I'm trying, and we have no intentions of cheating anywhere along this or misleading anyone. So, yes, it'll be a lot harder to build on these lots than anywhere else, but if we have people who really want a nice lot on one of the few lots remaining, they're going to have to go through all the motions to get this done and to get it done legally, and that's our expectation.
Thank you. So, motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hearings closed. Comments, questions from the board? Thoughts?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm actually gonna go down the normal platting discussions on, on just some questions and concerns. One of the concerns I have looking at the layout of the plat is some of the things we always run into when it comes into lake shore properties. And that's where my question on the, the number of lots came in earlier. To meet all the setbacks, everything fits, right? As far as house locations. But if you look at the spacing of those house locations, it's the, it creates a scenario we always run into trouble with when it comes to land use conflicts and, and people being on top of each other. They're pretty tight in there. So when you start looking at how the property gets used, I'm, I'm just wondering if the spacing of those lots and meeting all the setbacks with the way it's currently plotted is accomplishing a lot of the, the things that we're, we're trying to balance when it comes to land use and, and people crawling all over each other. It's, it's the stuff that always comes up. They're playing their music too. Their dog's running in our yard. You always have that, but the tighter people are on top of each other in these scenarios, the more you run into it. Concerns I had.
Other comments? Hearing ended. Let's move on to the findings of fact. Is the proposal consistent with subdivision and zoning ordinance? Why or why not? I am going to, go ahead.
No. Mr. Chair, I'm just getting back to it. I believe it is consistent with the zoning ordinance, number 439. I'm trying to scroll back all through my notes to get the specifics for record. If you have them, you can fill them in, but I'm almost there. Okay. Lot of conditions here. I believe it is consistent with land use and zoning ordinance 439, sections 9.3, 9.9, 10.1, and 10.2.
Point 4A?
I didn't see point 4.8.
4A. After 10.2, point 4A.
Okay, I'll, I didn't see that on here that it applied, but I'm gonna take your word for it, that it also meets that as well.
Okay.
Jase, thanks.
I'm gonna say it's inconsistent with the other ordinance.
The subdivision ordinance?
Subdivision, thank you. 230, 1.4.3, because we are not creating lots that are suitable in its natural state for the proposed use, and we have significant historic sites on the site that could be impacted and potentially be harmful to the health, safety, and welfare of future residents.
And for the record, Jase, I, I actually agree with that side too when it comes to the plot itself. So it, it fits legally. It conforms. There's challenges when it comes to, I think, the way the plots laid out with the, the homes themselves.
All right. Number two, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county? List applicable sections.
Mr. Chair, I'll take a shot. I, on a couple of the living goals, I do not believe that it does. I'm gonna come back to the way it's plotted in there. I think, and, and again, this is just based on what I've seen as being successful application of, in platting in, on other properties that are similar throughout the county. It seems tight to me based on the space and the proximity of lake shore and, and everything that are, are the typical concerns. So when it comes to living goals, managing the impacts of growth and development on the county's rural character and natural resources. This is plotted similar to what we saw, lake shore being plotted back, you know, in the 70s and 80s, where, where things are tight. And we don't typically see that today. So from that standpoint, I think it's a challenge. I actually think it does. This is a debatable topic, but when it comes to respecting and preserving architectural, archaeological, and cultural history while building on all residents' cultural assets to strengthen the county and cohesion, I, I believe the applicant is, in many regards, trying to do what they can with the property. I, I do understand the concerns of, you farmed this property for 100 years, and, and all of a sudden, now this particular use ends up being an issue where you can't pound a stake in the ground. I get that. But on the flip side, there clearly are some concerns with, when it comes to this property, which complicates this platting as well.
I, I, yeah. I, I understand. I hear that. I hear the, the conflicting or potential for conflict within the, whether it meets the comp plan or not. I, I guess I'm of the view that all other aspects of what we look at, these lots do seem to conform. The fact that there is another agency that might have some significant restrictions is really a risk that is being assumed by the seller and, and/or the buyer. And so I believe that the plat request here is consistent with the comp plan, comp plan for the county.
Thank you. Anything else? Number three, is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, I would, given, and I under, I agree with the concern of the, the density of the, the lots that are around this lake. This particular plat does seem to be consistent with that. I, I don't know if there's a way to, to rectify that at this point or change that or, but it does seem to be consistent with the other lots around that lake.
Mr. Chair, I would say an opposing viewpoint with that would be that the other lots around the lake aren't designated a cemetery.
Thank you. Understood. That's acknowledged. But again, that issue aside, it, it seems to be consistent.
Four, how has the applicant demonstrated that standards and criteria stated the ordinance will be satisfied?
Mr. Chair, there are a variety of conditions that would apply to this, and a lot of additional hoops to cross that would assure that the criteria is gonna be satisfied.
Other issues pertinent to this matter?
Mr. Chair, what Jason just alluded to, would those, all those MIAC conditions be added for the approval?
Yes, Mr. Chair, those are part of the proposed conditions.
Okay. So then all of them would be added?
The requirement to get approval from MIAC before any ground disturbance.
All the things that they listed before.
And, and in addition to that, there's still the Whiteland stuff. There's the storm land, there's stormwater management. There's a, there's a variety of conditions that ensure that, that everything fits the, the ordinances.
So a couple of things. We did have platting commission recommend denial. And then also, for those of you who have been on the board for a while, it is not uncommon for us to experience after-the-fact requests. In this case, an after-the-fact request could be a criminal action. So just keep that in mind. This is not, we're not having a civil action if, if the builder says, and not Mr. Wilkens at all, but we're looking down the road, the next person buys the property, and Weiner Construction comes out there and says, "Oh, sure, I'll build a house." Game's a little different. All right. So we have, we've heard all the issues. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, one other item. Township did approve.
Township recommended approval. Thank you for that. Recommended motion.
Mr. Chair, I will, I'll make a motion to approve the plat with the conditions that, and there are several, as they've been identified.
Motion's made. Do we hear a second? Do we hear a second? Do we hear a second? Failure to have a second, the motion fails. I will entertain another motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to recommend denial, not on, this not being developing, developed property. Mine is based on the way that the plat is drawn up and some of the concerns when it comes to, I didn't even get into a couple of the other lake shore living policy issues when it comes to clustering housing away from water bodies and, and things like that. So to me, it's more the density and all of the conditions that need to be met within that particular plat. That is, is my reason for recommending to not denial. There's a variety of other issues too. We're a recommending body, and just looking at the plat as it comes to us, there's a lot of hurdles that I have a hard time making a recommendation to approve.
So we have a motion for denial. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second. Deny the permit. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Post.
Post.
Motion passes.
Do we want roll call?
Motion, motion.
Yeah.
Roll call, okay. District one is chair. I've abstained from the vote. So District two, David Bentrud.
opposed to the motion.
District three, Jason Crone.
Yep, I'm an aye.
District five, Jacob.
Aye.
At-large, Rich.
Aye.
At-large, Tara.
Aye.
So what is that? Four to one?
Yes, four to one.
And that will go before the county board on February 11th.
Correct.
Thank you for your time.
Date again? February?
February 11th.
11th?
Yep.
Board meets at 9:00 a.m. downtown. Touch with you.
Can we take a five-minute recess?
Five-minute recess. Five-minute recess. All right, I'm going to call us back in session. So, we good? Everyone mics on, please? So final agenda item for the day, well, action item, to consider request for conditionally use permit submitted by Shady's Property Investment of Pelican Lake LLC, Albany, Minnesota, according to Sections 4.8, 9.9, and 10.2.4A of Sterns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance Number 439. To expand the use including an outdoor band shelter and outdoor events in the residential R1 zoning district, the property under consideration is located in the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter, lying southeast of County Road 154 in Section 6 of Avon Township. Property address is 18527 County Road 154, Avon, Minnesota. Do we have the applicant today? Would you like to take a seat as our person to the table? All right, staff visits. I visited.
I visited.
Jason.
Yes.
Justin.
Yes.
I did.
Yes.
Tara. Yes.
Chaos in that, okay. Staff report.
All right, so this conditionally use permit request is to expand the existing commercial use on the property, specifically to use the existing outdoor band shell and the existing outdoor bar, and then to have 10 to 15 outdoor events with music per year, and one to three events going past 10:00 p.m. Just a little background, the applicant's bought the property in January of 2023 with the current, existing eating and drinking establishment on the property. We did receive a complaint and discovered the band shell and bar without permits, and in November 2024, a variance was granted for the impervious lot coverage on the property and the location of the bar. It's Property Zone Residential 1, it's within the Shoreline Overlay District of Pelican Lake, access is from 100, or County Road 154. Parking, based on the number of parking spots they have, they would be limited to 393 seats within the venue. No changes to signs, lighting, or screening are proposed, septic system was certified in 2024, variance granted for the current lot coverage, impervious lot coverage of 51.1%, and they do have a food and beverage license for the facility already. There are approximately 66 homes, one animal feedlot with more than 10 animal units, two animal feedlots with less than 10 animal units, and the Pelican Lake Ballroom within a half mile of the property. The area surrounding the property is a mix of zoning, agriculture, 40, residential 5, residential 1, and then there's Pelican Lake along with rural residential lots and lake shore residential lots in the area. Comprehensive plan shows this as concentrated development in this area. If you recommend approval, the proposed conditions, number one, specify the number of days that outdoor music is allowed, again, they're requesting 10 to 15 events per year with one to three events going past 10:00 p.m. Consider setting hours allowed for outdoor music events. Outdoor music is only allowed on the property provided the noise levels comply with Minnesota Rules Chapter 7030, MPCA State Noise Standard. And then, based on the number of parking spaces, a maximum of 393 seats are allowed at any one time, including both indoor and outdoor seats, and then I did add unless additional parking spaces are provided. And that's all I have at this point.
Okay. Mr. Mergen?
Where did you come up with that parking plan?
That was the plan that was submitted with the 1991 conditionally use permit when they did the addition to the building, that was the plan that was provided at that point.
Could you introduce yourself and your address?
Lee Mergen, 14690 Chippewa Road, Bertram, Minnesota.
Anything you'd like to add to the staff report?
I don't feel that that parking is correct, I would think there's about 20 more additional parking spots that are not on that map, at least. I don't know, I, the first time I have seen this was today, and I, I didn't know who came up with that, but that makes sense if that's what they did in 1991, because that's not really the layout anymore. Which, I don't, I don't care, 391 people in the places, we, we haven't done a wedding over 300 people, I don't think we've done a wedding over 275, so, I'm not, I just was curious, I'm fine with 391.
Okay.
I, I don't care, that, that part is, I was just curious.
Sure, okay.
Any other input?
No.
Questions from the planning commission members?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Mergen, do you presently play music out there on the property? No?
It's summertime only, and most of what we do is during the day. Like, it's, um, 3 o'clock till 6 o'clock, or, you know, 4 till 7 maybe, but generally not, I think we did, maybe three events that went till 10, I don't think we did maybe one that was till 11.
Okay, my question is, what is, at your present permit, what does it state about outdoor music?
There is no perm, there's no conditions related to outdoor music on, and any of the previously, previous permits from the, I think the last one was in the 90s for a conditionally use permit.
The township, I believe he was a supervisor, township board member, they redid their policy, and he asked us what we were shooting for, for outdoor events, and what times for the noise ordinance, and we asked for 10, and they gave us till 11. So, and I think we were asking for 20, and they went for 30, so, I'm fine with 20, and I'm fine with 11, but 10 to 15, when I've got another establishment in this county that gets 20, seems a little odd to me.
Okay. I guess I'm a little bit concerned as far as how we allow music outside without a permit, is, is that, how, how does, how do we do that?
That, well, it wasn't allowed. That's why they're here asking to, to be allowed to do that.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. And, and, and there's a, there's a bench shell or a band stage that's on the property? I mean, I saw it, I mean, I'm.
Yeah, faces, face, is this thing working?
Yeah, you just gotta be really close.
It, it faces the building. Yep.
So a question I had, so when you came on November 2024, so a couple months ago, we granted the variance, were you thinking of doing this at the time, asking for the CUP in November?
Yeah, that, that was all part of the process, once we got the original complaint, this was all part of the process of working through gaining compliance.
Okay.
So yeah, the variance was the first step, and then this was the follow-up.
Great, thank you. Other questions from the commission?
So just to clarify, as, one of the things we need to do is to probably set those parameters around the music and so on and so forth, what I'm seeing in the notes here was like 10 to 15 events per year, so, is 15 events and 10:00 p.m., no music, outdoor music after 10:00 p.m. conducive to, does that work for you from a condition standpoint? Or what, what was the condition you're requesting?
My, my question is, why am I going to get limited to 10 to 15 when I currently have another establishment that's set to 20?
Yeah. It said the applicant, and the reason I said that, we're not, we, we would set what that is, in the notes, it said that the applicant was requesting 10 to 15, which is why I, I mentioned that, so.
So then here is my next question, because I was here for the Sunny Mary Meadows thing, is this going to be during day, or at night, or what, what, at any time of day?
What we were going to say is specify, specify the number of days outdoor music is allowed, so, that's a good point, we didn't, as it states now, we would have said how many days it's allowed, and then.
Mr. Chair, for a second.
Go ahead, Tara.
So the, the previous one that we talked about was an agriturism business.
True statement.
This business is an established business that was the landing in previously a different business, this business hasn't changed.
Right.
What they've been doing, just who owns it.
Correct.
For a long time.
Yeah.
So it's a little different.
Right, I would think a bar is kind of expected to do the things that we do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I, I did have a question. If I understand it correctly, from what I saw, that stage is not very big, and probably is not going to be able to accommodate a large multi-member band performing, are you proposing to have these bands set up somewhere else?
No.
Or you, is that the stage you plan to use?
We set it up in mind of one to two-person bands.
Okay, so.
Is it amplified? Sure, it's amplified because just to the bar is, I don't think anybody can yell that loud if it's not amplified.
Okay. I, yeah, I just.
Were you out at the site? Sorry, I wasn't really, you were out at the site?
I was.
Okay. From where you walk out on the patio, it's, there's a little bit of a distance to the stage, that concrete pad that's down below was there since, I don't know, 1990 something, so we just put it on top of there, because then it made sense to put it there.
Okay.
Yep. Back to the point on the CUP, at some point, we're going to have to put some kind of parameters on what does it look like, I, I, there was another Shady's location, I live, I live right by it, where it became a topic, and everyone that lives around the lake has a different opinion, some, we liked the music, our neighbors didn't like the music, and so you just end up at one of those situations, so you try to put those conditions in place to ease the whole deal.
Make everybody happy, I completely get it.
So, back to the point, I'm cool with 20, it's better to start with what you're requesting to fit the business need, and then adjust based on what satisfies the needs of, of everybody in the area, that's why we're around here. So 20 events, and then no outdoor music after 10:00 p.m., does that conform or consist with?
Sure, and I think Heidi, you said one to three after, right?
Yeah, the application asked for one to three events beyond 10:00 p.m.
Okay.
That was what the application stated.
Okay.
I, and, I had another question too, if I could.
Yeah.
The, there's a ballroom next door.
Correct.
And in, and maybe in desire to, to protect the neighborhood of the, the area out there, is that, is that ballroom open for business, and do they, and if they are, do they have outdoor music?
It is, but they only open for weddings, so it's not open Monday through Friday, I think they open on Tuesdays from 5 until 8, or maybe 9 for a roasted chicken, it's kind of a thing out there.
Okay.
But they're not open like a Monday.
They don't typically have large outdoor music events.
They don't really have a bar, it's more of a wedding, they only, pretty, pretty much just open for weddings.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Other questions from members? Hearing now, a little bit.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Yes. Is the parking shared between the two facilities, or is it separate? I mean, the, the ballroom parking and the parking here at, at your establishment?
Last year, we had a car show, it's not that, that many people were there, but our parking lot was filled just because of the show of cars, and we asked the neighbor if we could park over on his side, and he had no problem with it, I know there's times when he has events and his overflow comes on our parking lot, that's totally fine, I, I don't have, have any problems, is there a written, do we have a written agreement? No, but I think we've got a fairly decent relationship with them where there's not ever been an issue, and I certainly don't intend on starting one.
Other questions? Hearing now, open the public hearing, so please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Good evening. Are we on? It's green.
Yeah, you gotta get super close.
Okay. Just to answer, I'm Leroy Gondringer, I'm a township supervisor from Avon Township, and I used to serve on this board for nine years, Jason, I think, has my job, but the ballroom, one of the questions was the Pelican Lake Ballroom, you know, that was an old dance hall years ago, and it, it still is, they, they don't have dances anymore, about 30 years ago, they, when they still had dances, they had an, an outdoor band, and there was such an uproar in the neighborhood, they didn't have another one, so, that, that shut down. But with that, Avon Township is very supportive of all businesses in the township, having said that, it is our duty as elected officials to weigh the property rights of this business to expand by adding an outdoor music venue against the neighbor's right to not have to listen to loud music, potentially every weekend throughout the summer. Last year, Shady's held a couple of music events without any permits, I guess, in, in the, their stage is also not permitted, the sheriff's department was called out by the residents because of the loud music, us township officials also got calls because of the loud music. Because Shady's is on the shores of a lake, the, the noise carries across Pelican Lake. People on the other side of the lake last year told me that they could hear the music in their house like it was their next-door neighbor blaring music out their windows. About 10 years ago, Avon Township developed a noise ordinance because another business in St. Anna started having outdoor music, the St. Anna Bar, and we received many complaints. The ordinance was specifically designed not to allow outdoor music. We also created a noise exemption permit to allow a business to hold a very limited number of events if approved by the township. At our last meeting, the Avon Township Board voted unanimously to recommend the county deny this application because of the following reasons. Number one, this is a non-conforming business located in a R1 residential district. Number two, non-conforming businesses should only be allowed to expand if they will not create an undue burden on nearby residents. Number three, there are many homes located near Shady's that the township believes will be negatively impacted by the loud music. And number four, Shady's has a great space inside to have loud music that will not affect the neighbors, so denying this request should have minimal impact on their business. And number five, it would be extremely difficult to monitor these noise levels. However, if you decide to allow this CUP, the township at a minimum would request several conditions. Number one, outdoor music events would be a minimum of 30 days apart, there's a lot of neighbors all around that lake, some, some are cabins, some are full-time residents, you know, they expect to come out for the weekend and have a peaceful, peaceful evening campfire and not listen to loud music. Number two, outdoor music events would not last past 10:00 p.m. Number three, Shady's would be in compliance with Avon Township's noise ordinance. Number four, Shady's would be required to get a noise exemption permit from Avon Township for every event they have. And number five, we would like to see Shady's would be required to purchase and install equipment to measure in real-time noise levels in accordance with state, county, and township noise standards. Thank you for listening to my concerns, or our township's concerns, and if you have any questions, I'd sure be open to answering any questions.
Mr. Chair, quick question for Leroy, so, if the township recommend, or has noise ordinances in place, wouldn't that supersede, in this instance, anything the county would say? Both would have to be compliant, wouldn't they?
In my view, y- yes.
Yeah, okay. So I, I guess where I'm coming from is, it, it wouldn't even necessarily matter what the county would say in this particular case, that the township's position should override it, is what my understanding would be.
It, it would, keep in mind that sometimes 30 people voting at a township election can change supervisors.
Yeah.
So, things would change.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I, you know, that's why I'd ask the county to, you know, look long and hard at this, this issue.
Yeah, understood. Okay, thank you.
So please state your name and address.
My name's Doug Frederickson, 26545 Jade Road, St. Cloud, I live in St. Joe Township. Happy to be here in front of your committee again, my name's Doug Frederickson, I'm the board supervisor for St. Joe Township. We last presented to this committee in July of 2024 when the Tyson CUP application was before you. We closed our comments that evening by indicating a conditional support for their plans based on St. Joe Township and Sterns County Environmental Services agreeing to jointly draft operational safeguards to maintain the MPCA music sound levels. I'm happy to report shortly after that meeting, environmental services staff contacted the township and requested any potential draft language that we may have for that purpose, and we were happy to see that. We sent approximately eight core concepts that we felt would create a meaningful framework. Our interpretation, if, if it's correct, I mean, the county staff seemed sincere and enthusiastic towards creating new operational language for noise. We thought our concepts would create a CUP that guides the holder operator on how to best protect themselves from violations of the MPCA sound restrictions, a, a CUP that significantly reduces the county staff time from compliance events, a CUP that reduces residents' complaints about excessive noise events, and a CUP that significantly reduces township staff for compliance events. Unfortunately, then Tyson's withdrew their application from the CUP permit process, and no further moment or movement has occurred with us in the township. We're here tonight to encourage your committee to withhold your approval until Sterns County does in fact develop operating parameter language to protect local residents and the permitted businesses from taking advantage of each other. Please do not leave this very important pollutant inadequately addressed here at your committee level, assuming it's going to be handled later by the county board. Our township is now operating an apple orchard. the meeting. And you struggle with the noise stuff. And it's so easy. It's not hard. And and there's language out there. I mean, bring it into your dialogue so you can just kind of skip past that part, knowing that you've protected the county, the business owner, and the residents. Our noise management concept's pretty simple. Noise must be measured in real time before it can be managed in real time. What's happening right now is that the county and yourselves, I'll use this analogy, you're issuing, you're stating a speed limit for sound. Boy, you can't go over this decibel. There you go. You're stating that speed limit. But you're not mandating that the operator has to buy or even use a speedometer. But you've stated the speed limit, but they have no means of knowing whether or not they're speeding or not. And it that's the frustrating part. The county can get this right, and it'll be such a blessing to all the stakeholders. That way, you don't convince a business. I mean, I look at Shadys. I mean, the MPCA, Avon may have a noise ordinance. But here's what happens. If it's a nuisance ordinance, hasn't got a chance when it gets challenged in court. What's a nuisance to Bob isn't to Jim and isn't to Jane. A nuisance is an opinion. Decibels, MPCA has set those, and it always seems to run up to that. So and that's what environmental staff has put into the one CUP I'm used to. So the decibels are important. And but make them buy a speed limit or make them buy a speedometer. Make them run the speedometer. Because otherwise, they're gonna they're gonna take advantage by accident or on purpose. They're gonna take advantage of residents. And that's gonna drive the complaints. And and the sound level is at the property line. MPCA says you can make this much noise in the state of Minnesota at your property line. See how that's self restricting? If if the man here who owns Shadys, if he looks at that and he looks at the noise and says, hey, you know what? I can't make that standard. Well, by gosh, give him a break. Let him find out before he builds a bunch of beige stages and all that stuff, spends all that money, and then finds out, hey, you've given me a legal noise limit I can't possibly make. So we encourage you to set that threshold here in this committee before votes made. Respectfully to St. Joe Township. Thanks.
What is that threshold, decibel? What do you recommend?
And the MPCA will tell you in residential at sixty five.
What do you recommend?
Decibel.
What do you recommend?
I don't. I because if somebody challenges you, you're all heading to the court. And it's the judge, and the judge is gonna look around and say, who's the smartest in the world here or in the land who's gonna make this determination?
St. Joe Township came up with these eight recommendations?
Oh, oh, those things. Yes, yes. St. Joe Township came up with them and offered them to because we were gonna work together with environmental services at the county so that we could establish a language that could just be slipped into CUPs and that they could be distributed. It may be stuff that the county approved and and they're happy with. And and it would it would be an instructional type of thing for business owners before they get into a court fight after they've spent the money and a resident has has now challenged what they're doing. And you come back with, if I would have known, I would have made a different choice. That's why we think it's a benefit. That's why we encourage it.
Yeah, I've never heard any of that. Thank you for your comments. Name and address, please.
Hello, my name is John Tillman. I live at one eight, three, five, nine, County Road one fifty four, Avon, Minnesota, three residences down to the east of the establishment in question. The first night that the music was played, they started at eight o'clock and they played till midnight. I made the complaint with the sheriff's department. They went and notified the establishment that they were in violation of the township ordinance, and they continued to play the music after they contacted the supervisor. And they didn't get accurate clarification. The township ordinance is fifty decibels and that you cannot violate Minnesota statute, which is depending on if you are L ten or L fifty, sixty to sixty five decibels from seven AM until ten PM, and then fifty to fifty five between the hours of ten PM and seven AM. After they were notified, they had another event one week later in violation of the ordinance and played from six PM till ten PM, well over fifty decibels. About three weeks after that, they had another event from six PM to ten PM in violation of the local ordinance. The reason the ordinance wasn't enforced by the sheriff's department is because Avon Township failed to file with the new E-file system, which is in process now. It's at the judge's desk. From that point forward, the sheriff's department can and will enforce this ordinance. I don't believe ten to fifteen or twenty events at this type of a venue is a act of good faith, because you're looking at good weather times throughout the year, which means their plan is to have an event every weekend from the spring until the end of fall. It's an outdoor venue. They've demonstrated that they are not willing to follow the ordinances or the guidelines after they've been notified that they exist. And I strongly recommend that you do not allow this to happen. And that if you do, you follow the recommendations of the township's guidelines of no more than once in a thirty day period. No later than ten o'clock. Because if they go later than ten o'clock, that requires a permit from the state, not from the township. Township cannot grant that. And there's been no, from my perspective, no intent to comply. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? State your name and address before you begin, please.
Michael Fluger, one, two, zero, one, four, County Road fifty one, St. Joseph, Minnesota. I feel for the residents in St. Ana, this would be a bad idea. I'm one of them residents that live on fifty one, and our summers have been ruined by loud music every weekend. When environmental services comes out, does do their monitoring, there's no complaints. The music is turned down. But when there's nobody there to babysit them, they crank it up and do as they please. And if the people in St. Ana have to put up what we have to put up with, I feel sorry for them. I can't even sit in my house with the windows closed, central air turned on, and watch my TV. And I'm a quarter of a mile through the woods away from this place. I just feel I feel sorry for them if this has passed. That's all I have to say. I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
There's one thing I forgot to add. I did measure with my phone. I didn't have a calibrated device. In my yard, it was sixty five, which is a lower elevation than the bandstand. My house, the main floor is in direct line of sight with the bandstand, and it was seventy two decibels.
And, excuse me, sir, and what's about the approximate distance?
About point two miles. So this is not, for reference, sixty five decibels is a conversation inside a room.
Any other members of the public? Yes. Name and address, please.
Dennis Duran, County Road one thirty eight. I'm a supervisor for St. Joe Township. We have been going through this battle for almost five years. They originally came in with an apple orchard and a winery and giving tours. And then pretty soon, all of a sudden, there was live entertainment outside. They put up a stage, and they put up a wall on the east side of the stage facing the freeway and left the west side wide open. I sat on Mike Flieger's deck a couple summers ago, listening, and I had the decibel thing on my phone going. And they broke it many times. I feel that they have violated the CUP more than once. I went there a couple months ago.
Are we talking about this application?
M and H.
That's a different item. Let's keep focused on this one.
I'm sorry. I went there a couple months ago, when it was still nice out, on a Friday night, and people were leaving. But I went in there and I couldn't get in because they said it was a full. And I said, what's full? And this is five hundred. And according to the original CUP, we were allowed three hundred.
If I can cut you off, we're talking about Shadys now. We're not talking about M and H.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm talking about M and H. So I'll just excuse myself when we're ready.
All right, thank you. Other members of the public?
Jim Nathan, County Road fifty one, St. Joe. I just thought I would throw a couple things in here. I live down from my neighbor, and I, the noise would be what the guys are saying in St. Ana would be basically what I put up with. I'm three quarters of a mile away. And, yeah, when you can sit in your house and and still hear it, or I got a radio on in the barn, and you could still hear the music, nobody seems to care about, you know, if we don't like it or not, they just crank up the music. When you can understand somebody three quarters of a mile away, I'm sure that that's gonna happen on a lot of the events that's going on outside like that.
So is this in relation to Shadys?
It's basically the same thing. Just what the guys were saying before I got here.
So if we can stay focused on the Shadys?
Yep, I would say so. The noise, the volume, that's the thing. Yep, the big volume. And then for the people not to stand by what they say that the parameters are, they just let it rip.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
You bet. Thank you.
I'm Leroy Gondringer again. If I could just have another minute. I didn't ask these fellows from St. Joe to to come tonight. But I really appreciate them kind of forewarning us of what's going to happen if if this is allowed up in St. Ana. You know, a lot of people, they don't, until it affects them, they really don't say much. I was actually surprised that John was the only one here from Avon Township, because I heard from a number of people, they were upset about this. So I appreciate someone who's lived this over in St. Joe to give their input onto what what could happen and probably will happen. We have a lot more residences around Pelican Lake than what what's over there. So thank you.
Any other comments? Do we have any written material?
Yes, we have. One letter that was sent to you from Joseph Lang. Just says, I have no problem with the conditional use permit as long as Shadys follows the Avon Township noise ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I received for written comments.
Okay. Do you have any feedback from what you heard? Okay.
What is our current noise decibel level at Longshots? Heidi, is it seventy? Is that what Longshots is?
I think we just say that it's got to meet the state.
Sure. And then since we did this at Shadys, I mean, I think the, I'm sorry, I, oh, that Longshots, since we did that, have the complaints gone down?
We have not had any complaints at Longshots.
So and before we did this, there was a lot of complaints, correct?
Correct. Yes, we did get complaints from after a couple events you had out there.
Before.
Before we went through the the whole permit process and set
Putting on after.
Correct.
Okay, I need a motion to close.
I'll make a motion. We close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Additional comments from the board?
Yeah, first of all, I do like the recommendation from St. Joe Township that we look at some things to just create a standard. Anytime there's a CUP that's involving music, let's just start with something. Because I hate piecemealing like we did in the first time. And it is clearly a sensitive topic that would be good. So I don't know if staff is okay working with the townships and bringing back some recommendations for us to discuss at a future meeting.
So we did have some discussion about this and have some revised conditions related to noise that I can read to you guys if you want right now or?
Due to the duration tonight, if we just add it to like an agenda item for like maybe the next month's meeting or something like that, then we can discuss it. And is that okay?
Are you intending to pass this tonight, but you would want to?
In all honesty, in this one.
Intention to continue or is the intention to to make a statement related to a recommendation of approval or denial?
Fair question.
Because if it's coming back, then we can we can do lots of stuff. If it's not, then then we should at least read the potential condition if that's the direction you're going for recommending.
I wasn't necessarily on this item. And for this reason, I was looking at it long term. For this reason, I I think at the county level, we should, the philosophy on the way our government was set up is that it should always be managed at the most local level. And so there's nothing that the county in this case should always be less restrictive and then respectful to what the township should be able to enforce their own ordinances. To this, to, you know, to the representative from the township on this one, in fairness to to them, I'm okay matching what they currently have for for their language. They should be a recommending body to the county in this case for what they want within their township. So I would, that's why I didn't think it is applicable in this case. But for all future to have a spot to start. That's opinion of one. So the rest of the board can weigh in or commission can weigh in.
Mr. Chair, I would, I guess, I'd echo that. It seems like at least two of the last three meetings, we've had issues related to noise and out vent centers and and including another one tonight. And I think that, or I guess I would recommend, and I don't know if it's a matter of delaying this one, but I think these events are becoming more and more popular, as we all know. And there certainly is an economic benefit to communities when these things are able to take place. And there's there is that. But I understand it can be burdensome for neighbors that live in close proximity if it's not regulated to some degree. And I think I think we just need to figure out what that, we need some standard that we can apply. And rather than be, it feels like we're being a little bit too, I don't know, random or, so I think we need to come up with something. So if that means giving staff time to to bring a proposal forward, and I don't that means delaying this application now, but maybe that's be a first good step is to try to come up with something that the townships and the county
And I think that, or I guess I would recommend, and I don't know if it's a matter of delaying this one, but I think these events are becoming more and more popular, as we all know. And there certainly is an economic benefit to communities when these things are able to take place, and there is that. But I understand it can be burdensome for neighbors that live in close proximity if it's not regulated to some degree. And I think, I think we just need to figure out what that... We need some standard that we can apply. And rather than be... It feels like we're being a little bit too, I don't know, random, or... So I think we need to come up with something. So if that means giving staff time to bring a proposal forward, and I don't know what that means delaying this application now, but maybe that would be a first good step, is to try to come up with something that the townships and the county can agree on. It would be consistent across the board.
Mr. Chair?
I want to tell you, I was just hearing Jason and hearing Dave say, "We've been at this for a while, and these neighbors are testifying how they basically feel like they're being abused." If I want to go out and say, "Well, I want to have a rural business, Joe's Hen House, and I'm gonna put up a few chicken coops and say, 'Well, come on out and pick the eggs.' But when you're out here, you know, we'll make it kind of nice for you. We'll let you have a beverage." And they say, "Well, while you're out there, I'll let you listen to some music." And then pretty soon, I'm building a bandshell, and I'm having a rock concert, and I've got five hundred people on my property. But I'm saying, "Boy, they're still out here to pick up the eggs." We've got a big problem.
Yeah. Here's one thing, though, Joe, in fairness, because we've got to be respectful to everyone. There's some people that don't like the music, and I respect that. I live by Long Shots. I'm disappointed that I can't hear the music anymore.
But Long Shots is a bar, correct?
No, absolutely, yeah. Long Shots is a bar. So it's not a problem anymore, because it falls within the ordinance, but I'm just saying there's... We hear from people that have problems with it. We generally don't hear as much from the people that support it. And so we do have to try to weigh all considerations.
And Jason, I totally agree with you, but that's a bar. What I'm talking about, they're talking about a flower shop, and I'm talking about picking eggs. And now that what they've turned it into is a concert venue.
Well, we're talking here about Shadys.
Yeah, we're talking about Shadys, yep. And so, thank you, Jason. I mean, I guess for the rest of the planning commission, I'd be curious. In this particular instance, I'd just as soon match the township's recommendation. That should be the governing law of the land when it comes to the noise.
I personally have always supported the local government entity, and it's usually... They're the people that are living with the issue. And if they have some ordinances in place, we should support that.
So Heidi, do we have to act on this today if the board, the question is to continue this? Can we?
With our timeframe, you guys could continue it to the February meeting, and then the board would still act on it before we run out of time to act on it.
If we were to continue it to the February meeting, are we just allowing time for staff to incorporate the township requirements into the conditions? Or what would we be doing with the continuance?
Mr. Chair, I think, I think there's two things. One, we do want to have the conversation related to the township, the standards that specifically in this particular case. But we also need to want to... We also would like to have that conversation with the applicant. We know there's more than one party. And I don't know if that has been expressed. Are they okay or not okay, or where are their concerns? But as a previous township supervisor stated, you know, understanding the full packet of this and how do we want to approach it? There's, you know, it's probably good if we can bring a lot more information back related to that. That doesn't mean that you'd be adopting that for the county. You'd be looking at what specifically for Shadys you'd want to be doing. And the applicants would be able to fully understand it based on what's being said from the township, as well as potentially what we would come up with for conditions. And then we can have that full dialogue with everyone knowing what everyone is saying. I think it's hard when we're piecemealing. And that's the struggle. So continuance would allow for that.
Mr. Mergan, there's a lot of stuff going around. Would you be okay if we were to continue this until next month, so you can work with staff and other associated folks, so we can get a package that everyone can understand?
My question to you would be, we followed your ruling out at Long Shots, and I'm okay with that. And the complaints have stopped. If we can follow the rules at Long Shots, and I'm okay with it out at Pelican Lake, I don't speak... Because there's far more people out at Long Shots. And my neighbors are out at Long Shots are well within the point-two miles. Like, they are right next door.
Heidi, do you have the Long Shots?
Yeah, I can pull that up.
You know, the idea of having an outdoor event no more than thirty days apart, or whatever they were saying, is absolutely unrealistic. That's three times a summer. I don't even know how I'd operate like that.
Okay. So the condition that's on Long Shots reads, "Outdoor music is only allowed on the property provided the noise levels comply with Minnesota Rules, Chapter 7030, MPCA State Noise Standard. Noise levels exceeding Minnesota Rules, Chapter 7030, are considered a violation of Minnesota Rules, Chapter 7030, county ordinance, and the CUP. The applicant shall be responsible for sound monitoring during all outdoor music events, and monitoring records shall be made available to the department upon request."
Which I think has worked well, and we'd be open to. However, I'm not... I don't know exactly what the township's language is. So if we did continue it, it would be good to maybe just work with the township and make sure that it complies. Because I agree with you. I live right by it, by Long Shots, and it's no issue. But that's the opinion of us and the people that live in that area. Different township, possibly different expectation levels, that would probably be good to work through.
I agree. I think, like you said before, there's some people that like it and some people that don't. I would say that the people that like it are of the same mind frame, and the people that don't like it are of the same mind frame. A lot of people are a lot alike, and they're just because it's a different area, you're getting the same mindsets of people.
Yeah. I think it'd probably work. It's just becomes a problem if the larger portion of government undermines potentially the lower level where the residents are trying to speak. That's... That would be my recommendation for talking to them about it.
Sure. Like you had said before, would the township's rules supersede yours anyways? So you can still just set this, and if it's a township thing, then I have to go and speak to the township.
And that's a fair point, too. Yes.
So you can set your rule here today, but they can supersede you anyways. So then it becomes a matter of me going to the township.
Yep. That's true. And that would weigh into the continuation, whether you wanted to continue it or not. Yep.
I mean, I would think you guys could... I'm okay with a continuation, but I would think that you guys could vote on this based on the rules that we had at Long Shots, because that's pretty cut and dry. And then the next fight that I would have is with the township, because I'm still gonna have to comply, one way or another. But then it just... We're done here, then.
Well, it's your choice if you want to continue it or not, yeah. Or we could look at it, too, yeah.
It doesn't have to be in concurrence, but it often is nice to have concurrence.
So outside of the volume standards, are there any other days and hours in the Long Shots conditions?
Looking at their CUP, we don't specify hours. We specify a maximum of twenty-five music events per year. No... The outdoor seating capacity, there's a limit on that.
Of those are at night. Most of them are during the day. I know somebody had commented that we had the events... Never made a comment that it was during the day, because we had way more events during the day. But the comments were the night... I think the problem is the night ones. I don't ever... I've never heard a complaint about the stuff that goes on at three till seven. But we probably had ten events last year during the day.
So a lot of stuff floating around. So I would entertain a motion to continue this until the February meeting, should somebody so choose to do that?
I'd make a motion to continue. And I know we're talking about Shadys here tonight, but this body hears requests for outdoor venues from different townships. I don't know how critical it is that they be consistent, but to me, it would be nice if we had some guidelines that we could at least recommend to the townships to follow, so that we can, we have some uniformity and some consistency to what we're doing when we're making decisions on outdoor venues.
I do think that the Long Shots one is a winning strategy. It's proven.
It could very well be. I'll second the continuation.
Motion second. Do you have... All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. So we can continue it until the February meeting, which is the twenty-seventh.
Correct.
Mr. Chair, since we got Mr. Mergan here. Mr. Mergan, is it my understanding, with the Long Shots, though, there is a maximum number of outdoor events they can have?
Yeah.
It's twenty-five. And can that be established by the county and by the township, or either?
Well, we can establish a certain number, and then the township, if there are noise ordinance further limits, they can do that. But they can't just... I believe it's gotta be something that's part of one of their ordinances already. They can't just say, "We're gonna further restrict them to twelve." Or, you know, they can't... Since we're issuing the CUP, they can't supersede our CUP unless it's already part of an established ordinance.
Okay. But if there's not an existing number of events on a particular business, can they impose one?
I don't believe so.
Not in Shoreland. Not in the Shoreland area of our jurisdiction. So we're regulating that portion, but noise is above and beyond, so it's a separate ordinance. So... But as staff indicated, that if the standard isn't there, we can't just add a standard, so it needs to be in the ordinance. So those are the parts of the things we would want to make sure everyone's clear about what we're talking about, so everyone understands it, and then hopefully create some consistency in what we're doing overall.
All right. So thank you for your time, and we'll hopefully see you back on the twenty-seventh.
If you do decide to get a group of people together to come up with recommendations, can I at least recommend that you get someone that has a facility-like mind so that you can understand the economic impact of how bars need to operate to actually... Bars have changed dramatically over the last twenty years.
So I would encourage Shelley and the Environmental Services.
And it doesn't have to be me.
Take that consideration.
Sounded like a volunteer.
No, actually not.
All right. Agenda member five, minutes from the December meeting. It was a good one. Anybody want to move to approve them?
All abstain.
All right. So we have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Other discussion? Anything?
Yeah, question for staff. I think it's a great idea to get that feedback and then pull that together. It is a great case study at Long Shots. One got to watch unfold both before and after and talk to a lot of those neighbors. And it's been very good since. So I do think it's a good case study that we could maybe model some county language at. Just two cents, all right? That's good work to be done.
Sure.
As far as that goes, definitely not trying to throw another business under the bus. But out there in the world, I have heard a lot of complaints about the milk and honey thing. In the past, there's nothing you guys can do about it now. But I think if they were to follow the Long Shots thing, you wouldn't be hearing any complaints.
Thanks for comments. So we're gonna have this one in February. Do we have other items that we know about?
We have one rezoning request in Fairhaven Township. And then there was a campground amendment from December, or November? That... December. That was continued. That'll be on February. That's all we have so far. Oh, yeah. First item from tonight. Deadline's Monday, so we have at least four.
All right. Any other business? I will make an executive decision to adjourn the meeting.
I like it.
I'll agree.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you for your time, gentlemen and ladies.